That's it. All right, welcome to our work session tonight. Is this the, I think it's the Mardi Gras version of our Coventry work session tonight. Mr. McGee is not here. He may be here a little later, but he had another engagement that he had to get to. So if, could have a roll call by the Madam Clerk.
Greg LaBosse here.
Here.
Deb Bacon.
Here.
Gary Cody.
Here.
Ann Dixon.
Here.
Nicholas Gorham.
Here.
Ed Wazika.
Here.
Okay. And Town Sergeant, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Town Sergeant, if you go over the emergency evacuation plan for the folks?
Emergency evacuation plan.
Okay. And number two on the agenda is for year 2019, 2020, review of municipal department operating and capital budgets. And at this time, I'll hand it off to Town Manager Wazika.
Thank you, sir. What we're going to be doing this evening, we will have each of the department heads come up, and they'll be available for any questions that you have on their budget. Hopefully, we'll get through this relatively quickly. I spoke to President McGee, and we've decided we're just going to go right from one budget to the next in the book, so instead of jumping around. So if we start with that one, the very first one that we're going to have this evening is the Town Council's budget. So if we go to that first tab, please. And that is going to be 110. As you can see, on this budget, overall, this FY 20, FY 19, there is no change, no overall change in that budget. It's maintained the same amounts. There's been a minor transfer on travel expense and office supplies, but that's about it. So everything is the same as last year.
Anyone have any questions?
What's the travel expense?
Just a line that you, that the, it's always been in there in case any of the members have to, have to travel somewhere if they're going to review something. It covers the gas mileage that they would have, so that's why it's in there.
Does that cover, like if the Town Manager and the Finance Director and a member of the Town Council go to New York to meet with Moody's or something like that, does that come out of there? Or does, does that come out of a?
It would either come out of that or the Town Manager's budget, either one, whichever one, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Manager?
Tell me a little bit more about the expenses under council. I think it's item 41400. What does that mean? It's under Town Council.
That is, that is a stipend, that $1,000 is a stipend that goes out quarterly to the Vice President, excuse me, to the President of the Council to cover any of the expenses that they've had during that quarter. It's something that's been in the budget for years, and it's just, it's never been raised, so it's $250 a quarter to cover any, any costs that they might have.
There could also be, for example, let's say that you're going to do a food for an event that you're going to put together, and you want to do an outreach, and you pull everybody together and you have food. So, yes, I mean, get a little closer, talk a little louder. I believe it also can cover things of that nature, some tertiary expenses as well, as long as it has to do with operations of the council itself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next one up is the Town Manager's budget. That one, if you look at it, there is a, is a $21,000 projected increase in this budget. That, there's a couple of reasons why. One, there was a, I was advised to increase the manager's salary from the current 120 to 135 a year, which in turn also increases the cost of the FICA. That had to go up. And also, we, what was in last year's budget for our former Town Manager was a single, single plan for medical, and I brought that into family coverage, assuming the next manager will have, will need family coverage, so that's the increased cost. But you'll notice I've also dropped $1,200 out of the travel expense that was, that was in the budget. So I've actually, I've decreased that, and I've also brought down, oh, that's the, never mind, I brought the travel budget down.
Also in line with the range, it's the range for the Town Manager as well, so.
There's also a reduction in the, there was a temporary, temporary position, temporary employee line item in there for 2450, which I also removed out of the budget. That's why the, the net gain on this is only the 21,000.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, if I may.
Sure.
Just for a point of clarification, the increase in the Town Manager's salary is because even though we have hired a, for lack of a better term, a headhunting term, to find us a new Town Manager, for those of you that are familiar, you will see Mr. Wazika still sitting in the seat as the acting Town Manager, because we were not only having trouble getting applicants because of the pay scale, but if we did get an applicant, the first thing they asked is, was there any room in the budget to increase the pay scale? Because we were really on the low end, not only in Rhode Island, but in New England and nationally, we were on the low end of that scale. So to improve the number of applicants.
Quality.
And the quality of applicants that we received, we thought that it was prudent to up the, the pay for that position. And as of today, as you can see by Mr. Wazika still sitting there, we still haven't had much luck, but we're going to continue to look. I just wanted to explain that increase to people. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. Where would I find the line item for the consultant that we are paying for the search firm to find a manager? Where would we find that line item?
That line item came out, that came out of contingency. That was the only thing that it was available in at the time when he was hired. That, or professional services, which is also a line item in the seven, the 950 budget.
And I do have one other question. Just before the meeting, I asked Mr. Arnett to explain to me a little bit about the presentation of the budget, and I asked him the question about how the number that is in the column that is called difference was derived, and he has a great explanation, and I hope that he will share it with everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, we'll bring that up as, before we keep going on. So if we're looking at this, you'll see approved 18, 19, and then an adjusted budget column. And then, as Ann just pointed out, there's a difference column from the requested. The difference column is actually to the adjusted budget, not to the approved 18 and 19 budget. The reason why this is very important is that previous budgets, decisions were made to allocate funds a specific way. Then you have the adjusted budget, which actually shows the actual spending of that year. So decisions were made that you may have a contract that may be $30,000, and there was a decision made previous years to say, well, you're only allocated $20,000 to that line item. Well, you still have a contract that's still going to be required to be paid $30,000, so you would see a change in the adjusted budget that actually shows the expenditures in that line. So what we did here, which is smart budgeting, which is accurate budgeting, which is going off of what actually was spent in those years. So what I have here is a stack of all of the budget transfers that we've done all last year. Now, these are just the papers. Now, there are some, there are transfers in here that may have two or three transfers in any one, and that's because people are, department heads had to shift money around to put it to the line items that were not allocated enough funds previously. So that's why we have that adjusted budget column that is a much more accurate representation of what is actually needed for those line items, and that's where we started from, in hopes to mitigate this extra amount of work that's taking place on a daily basis, to actually show actual representation of what is being approved, of what has actually been spent. So that difference here, back to the question at hand, is that the difference in request is from the adjusted budget and what they're requesting. So it gives a much more accurate request line item. Did I answer your question?
Thank you. So going forward, next year, I would expect there'd be a little bit different, in that we would be managing to the budget that is provided, not what people are actually spending. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So how are we going to turn that around?
So we now have an accurate line item in which we can now look at the department head and see how well you're actually managing your budget to what is actually needed. And the, I wouldn't, I don't want to say the word, but I'll use the word excuse to that, you know, I wasn't given that amount of money, and I have to pay this bill, is now null and void. What the cost was is what you're going to be held accountable to.
Well, we, we hope we've gotten all of them corrected. I mean, then, some may have slipped through, but the vast majority, that's what we were doing with this budget, correcting each and every one of those line items. But like I said, anything could happen where we might have missed one or two on, on some, or new increased costs come into play during the course of the year, which happens, especially on some of the contracts that'll come up mid-year, and it could affect.
Correct, correct.
So, I mean, there are, there are reasons why, but the goal is to get these line items in line with their actual expenditures across the board.
But then I should see this, this stack here should fall, and now I'll have a much, much clearer understanding going forward.
That, in that way, department heads won't find that some money that they expected to be in their budget has now disappeared in some way, because it was sent to some other place, or what?
That doesn't necessarily happen. I can't think of it as a time where money would be removed, and they wouldn't know, or I can't think of an instance like that, because again, these, the transfers that we have here are, come from the department heads themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay.
Next one is the Citizens Advisory Committee, and that has $1,000 in that, and that is for the clerk that does the minutes. And it's $1,077 with, with the FICA piece. So that covers the cost of the minutes being taken for that, that committee.
Do we expect that there's going to be a Citizens Advisory Committee in this coming fiscal year?
It's still, the, it still exists, and because it still exists, I covered it in the budget, again, it's 1,077. I'd rather be safe than sorry. If it gets reconstituted and reenacted, then we've got it in there to be able to do that. And I think it's probably a good move to get that going once, once there is a permanent Town Manager in place to assist that person.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next is the IT budget. And that one, if you look, there has been a $14,000 decrease in that budget as well. I've actually removed, there was a slight increase in payroll, regular employees, and that's due to cover a step increase. It's a, it's a small amount. There was, I actually removed 14,000 out of my, my data processing line, and I actually moved in, and it's, it's not a separate line item yet, it will be when we finalize, a $5,000 cost for the alarm systems throughout the town. That's been moved from DPW over to the IT budget. So there is a, there's also a travel expense, I decreased that by $1,800, bringing the total drop in that budget to just shy of $15,000 over last year's budget.
The $5,000 that you speak of, will, when you add it, when you add the line item?
No, it's already covered into that, the previous one. It's just going to break five grand out of that and drop it into, it's not going to add five grand more to this. I just forgot, we.
Okay, but you said it was in the DPW budget.
It used to be. We cut it from the DPW budget.
It used to be. Is they're going to show, is the DPW budget going to show a reduction of $5,000?
Yes, that line item is, that line item has been cleared, yes.
I also want to point out one thing, as we close out this fiscal year, I'm also going to be breaking out data processing a little bit more to show a line item that says, my goodness.
We're going to break it down into the various components.
I'm drawing a blank now, Jesus. It's when you have the services, licenses, licenses, God, Jesus. Senior moments, it's that TBI, you know? It's software licenses that we have, so that we have to roll. So that one line item, those license renewals, we'll have to, I'm going to break that out too in data processing, so that, that will be broken out. But to answer again, that bottom line is not changing.
So one more question. Does this assume a two full-time person department, or what's the complement in that department?
Myself and Cody Horton, who is actually funded half through the town and half through the library.
Right.
So it's, it's actually a person and a half.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next in line is Human Resources. Finally get a break. Cheryl Wilcox is our HR Manager, and Cheryl will come up and answer any questions that you might have for her on this, on this budget.
Cheryl, give me a short synopsis of what your job duties are.
What are my job duties? I handle the pension.
Now, your first job duty is going to be to make sure that microphone's on, and make sure that you speak into it.
Employees hiring, taking applications, name it, human resources.
Handling the grievances.
Grievances.
Handling any kind of contract issues with the unions.
Policies, procedures.
Trust, handling, dealing with the trust on issues involving workers' comp.
Accidents.
Accidents.
One-person department.
That was actually broken out last, I believe, last year. As far as the transparency portal is concerned, when it comes to reporting, I have to, I have to report as well that human, human services, human resources component as well. So it, there's other reasons that really do help having a, its own department off to the side and segregated into this way.
For information purposes, I have spoken to Mrs. Wilcox and also to Mr. Wazika about trying to do something about organizing all our policies, because we have policies in several different departments, and we do need to start that work. And Mr. Wazika has given his support to us starting to reorganize that whole section as soon as the budget season is over.
Well, actually, we got started on that before that. We brought a company in this week to, it specializes in policies, procedures, managing them, putting them all online. You can do all the signing online, you can test the policies. It's an extremely comprehensive program that's going to allow us to better manage, better control all of the policies townwide. The Police Department's been using this company for a while, and we're extending off of that, and we've, we're ready to. It's very, extremely low cost for what it's going to involve. It's several thousand dollars for the year, and it's going to involve everybody in the town. So it's a, it's a real good program. We did a webinar on it the other day. We've got some, the quotes in on it, and it's in well under the $10,000 limit, so it's not going to have to go out to bid. We've looked at a couple of other companies that are out there, this one because it's already in town and being used, and it's, they're, they're in about close to 4,000 communities right now across the country, and it's a, seems to be a very effective program for managing all of these and maintaining them. So it's, we're working to move forward with that.
That's terrific news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one quick question. The line item, professional services, there was an increase to $3,000?
We had hoped, in the contract, the Council 94 contract, it says that we can start a health and wellness program. We had hoped to join with Planet Fitness and pay for some of employees to go there. Membership, yes. If that goes through.
We're, we're looking to try to, try to assist in reducing accidents in workers' comp issues by people getting healthier. It's something that the trust is recommended, something that they encourage, so it's something where we were looking at, and that's why you see that increased cost in there for the $3,000. It, if effective, it'll more than pay for itself in savings on the workers' comp side of the equation.
So the $3,000? And that works out to like 25 people being involved. Not all of them will be, but.
Okay, about 25, and this is you're talking gym memberships?
Yes.
Okay, and this company that you just discussed previously, bringing in regarding the policies, is that going to be in this budget, in Cheryl's?
It would actually be under, under the IT budget, and it would be handled under there, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at all? Okay. Mr. Manager? Thank you, Cheryl.
Next in line is the Town Clerk's budget. Joanne will be handling that as well, but just before she begins, if you look at the bottom line on that budget, you'll notice that we've got a total increase in that budget of $972. And that's it. It's, this is a very lean budget, there's not a lot in here. Most of these costs are all fixed costs, so there's very little wiggle room on, on any of these. Do you have any?
Any questions?
I just have one question. I mean, in many departments, there is overtime as one of the categories, and I'm wondering, does overtime have to get approved by some particular person in the department? How does that work? Because there seems to be money associated with overtime in almost every department.
I can tell you.
I can tell you what it is for our department. Sometimes when there's vacations, or if somebody has to cover for myself, it comes out of, you know, comes out of overtime. When we do the dog licenses.
That's what I was just going to explain. Most of that is due to, we do a Sunday, when they do the vaccination clinic, the dog, the rabies clinic at Town, at the DPW garage. We also open Town Hall for the Clerk's Office, and we have a couple of clerks in, and they're, they're open for licensing the dogs. We typically get somewhere around 300, 300 people come in and license their dogs on that day, so that's where the vast majority of that 400 comes from, is for that day of opening up for, for three hours on, on Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Good. Thank you, Cheryl.
Board of canvases, I'd, they are tied up currently on an election, so this one's a little tough to get anybody in, but if you look at this, again, because of election versus non-election years, the cuts to this budget are about $35,000 for next year over the current year. So they've, and they do, this, this budget especially has always maintained the numbers in line with what they need based on the number of anticipated elections, primaries, and so that's what this is all about, covering the temporary employees, the vast majority of it is for that.
So the $35,000 difference, it's a reduction?
Yep, yeah. Yes, that's a $35,000 decrease. The brackets are around it.
Is, so the all-day referendum for the budget, instead of the financial town meeting, is not coming out of this budget?
Yeah, it will, it will.
Temporary services, you'll see.
So we actually are throwing in an extra all-day referendum, even in a non-election year, and yet we're still able to reduce the budget by 35,000 and change.
Yes, you'll notice that one of the things that's happened is, we've had to put the employees, the, the poll workers can no longer be covered under a 10, under a accounts payable check. They actually are employees, so if you look down, you'll see a $27,000 increase in temporary services, and that's why those employees are now covered under that, as opposed to, I don't know why it was under the way they had it, but this is the way we have to do it as a service instead, because they're not an employee, they're a service that comes out of the employee mess.
So, so, so do we actually send those people a 1099?
Yes, they do. If they work, if they earn over 600, they will get a 1099. But that's why, it went from the 61, there's a reduction down to 27 this year, so that's why the 35,000 less. They're anticipated that because of less elections this upcoming year over last year. This is one you will see flux back and forth year to year, depending. Any other questions I can answer on that one?
What's the, what's the expected cost of the election that we're having today?
My understanding is that.
Zero.
I'd like to say that, Mrs. Dixon, but.
It's goodwill.
It, the anticipated cost is about, we calced it out today, and it's about 3,500 to 4,000. It's, we only open two polling places, we reduced the number down, the state allowed us to reduce it to two, they also allowed on the reduction on the number, so it really, it wasn't too, too bad a hit on, on that one.
So about $250 a voter?
My understanding is they are somewhere around 25 voters, the last I heard.
Oh, okay, it went down to 200. Okay.
I did vote.
I was advised of that, that you were the second one in this morning.
I was, I was in this morning, and I'm hoping to save the town money to recoup that money that you have spent.
I've got to make up a lot, ma'am. You've got to make up a lot.
I will do it. I will do it.
The, the next, the next department, if there were no other questions, is 440, which is the Solicitor's Office, and we are maintaining the same line item in that, the $440,000 for the cost of solicitor service throughout the year, which I might add, isn't just our solicitor, it covers all legal fees, it covers, we have Pierce Atwood, who handles the wind turbines and a lot of the issues with the planning department, and we also have.
Excuse me, what is this?
Rigasta, for legal issues. What that is, what you have right there that we just passed out is the actual invoices from the Solicitor's Budget over the last five years.
You also have Lock and Lord.
Lock and Lord, but that typically comes out of a different line item, Nick, it doesn't come out of yours, out of the main number.
The sheet I distributed is just to show what the Gorham and Gorham invoice is total. Those are calendar years in the columns instead of fiscal years, but the trend is consistent in any event. It's about between, well, as you can see, right around 260 to 270 per year. So it's never really fluctuated very much, it's about the same every month, and happy to answer any questions. I can briefly review what, what my firm does, which is, we attend all the meetings of the town. Yeah.
You say there's very little fluctuation.
I'm sorry. Very little fluctuation.
Yes.
Is what you said.
Yes.
But I'm looking at August at 30,000 and change.
Right.
And then I'm looking at September at 16,000 and change. Now, I don't know what you call a little fluctuation.
I'm talking about annually.
Oh, okay.
Annually.
Okay.
I was, monthly, it definitely fluctuates. The, um, it really, it, I don't, I wouldn't say that it's specific to any time of year. It's really more just when lawsuits heat up and you end up getting prepared to go to court. Or, um, last year when we had the financial town meeting and we had to scramble and have another financial town meeting to make sure we got everything done before
Well, I...
catastrophe hit, so.
I guess my, my next question would have to be, um, for 2015, uh, total was 266,000 and change.
Right.
Uh, 16 was 277,000, uh, 18, uh, 273,000, 443. If this is the fluctuation, why are we budgeting for 140,000? We're budgeting double.
Because we also have, we also have the other law firms that come out of this. We have Pierce Atwood, which handles a lot of the planning stuff. We have Vin Rigasta, which handles a lot of our, our...
Labor.
Labor, labor relations, uh, I mean, as of right now, this, this fiscal year, I've got Pierce Atwood.
I'm sorry, I thought that, I, I thought that Nick, um, appointed someone from his office to handle, uh, planning.
I do.
And, okay, so.
Yes.
But it's handling the wind turbine issue because of a, uh, a conflict with the wind turbine, so that's why Pierce Atwood is handling those issues.
Well, I understand if Nick has a conflict with the wind turbine, but are you telling me that anybody who works for Nick automatically has a conflict with the wind turbines because they work for you?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
That's right. That's how the, um, rules of professional conduct control what I and the members of my firm can do. In essence, they say if the attorney is, if any attorney in the firm is conflicted, the entire firm is conflicted.
Okay.
The labor work, um, has continued with Vincent Rigasta since I was appointed. When I was appointed, Mr. Hoover asked if I would mind if the, uh, the labor work stayed with Vincent Rigasta, and I said, "That's fine." So it's...
A great labor attorney, so, I mean, you know.
I think it's been a good choice, and I've never tried to change it around, other than slightly in some situations.
Yep.
The Pierce Atwood issue came up because I represented some of the landowners when they were in the very early stages of planning the, um, the wind turbine projects and before I was solicitor. When it came up, uh, and I was solicitor, it was a personal choice made by me. I didn't want there to be any doubt in anyone's mind in Coventry that they were getting independent counsel on, on those projects because I knew they were gonna be controversial. And, um, so Pierce Atwood was hired by Mr. Hoover. The rate was negotiated by Mr. Hoover. It is significantly more than the, uh, than my firm is paid for an hourly rate or Mr. Rigasta is paid for an hourly rate, so.
Significantly more?
Yes, I can tell you the rates. I don't really, my firm charges $150 an hour for everything we do. It's been the same rate since I was hired on September 22nd, 2014. Uh, Mr. Rigasta, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mr. Town Manager, I think is 180 an hour. It's been the same.
185 or 200, depending on what it is. We have, we have others like that's involved with Lock Lord, which is involved with the...
Landfill.
Landfill, which doesn't come out of this budget, it comes out of a different budget, but that one is a rate of 300 an hour.
That was, Mr. Hoover asked me if they could stay, and I said, you know, I wasn't really in a position to negotiate.
They've been on since the beginning.
He was the, he was the town manager.
What, you gotta get back to, what, what are we paying the attorney that's handling the wind turbines?
$235 an hour, which I believe was the rate that Mr., um, Mr. Hoover negotiated. So.
Was, Greg, I wasn't here, so you or Deb were, um, any members of the council in on those negotiations when it came to hiring that firm?
I wasn't on the council.
Yeah, yeah, Deb wasn't on, uh, at that point.
That was with Mr. Hoover when he was the, I wasn't, I've only been on for two years.
Okay.
Yeah, the, uh, the best of my recollection, there were, whatever, you know, uh, whatever his negotiations were that were there, it wasn't an approval or denial process on there.
Okay.
Not by the council.
Okay.
I don't expect the expenditures made by my firm to be any different, not expenditures, but the cost of my firm. I don't expect it to be any different, but it, it can change depending on the load of litigation because you don't have any choice. You have to defend the town, uh, when people bring lawsuits against the town or do whatever else they're gonna do.
Right, and unfortunately, but historically Coventry does have its fair share of litigation.
It does, it does.
Thank you.
So if there are no further questions, I'm gonna just go sit down.
I, I just, just want clarification. So when I look at this, I'm sorry, when I look at this, um, budget, this is for Gorham and Gorham and Pierce Atwood and Mr. Rigasta, is that right?
The 440,000, yes.
The 440, that represents the three firms.
And any other firm that may have to be hired under the circumstances.
Lock and Lord is something, some of the budget.
That comes out of, out of a different line item for, it's because it's the land, uh, the landfill.
Okay, good, thank you.
Right, but there's, there's other PRPs involved in that case, so.
The Lock and Lord is our, the town's attorney in reference to that, so we pay...
Right, that, but he represents us whether it's in dealings with the PRPs or EPA or whoever.
Correct.
Whoever, okay, thank you.
There have been a couple, there have been a couple of, uh, meetings when this whole thing was going on about the cap. There were probably 14 or 15 attorneys, and I can just imagine what the total cost of that phone call was, was going across the board, probably numerous thousands of dollars a minute by the way they were charging.
Now Karen Grandy, is hers out of this?
Karen Grandy is Lock and Lord, and that typically comes out of any of the, when we do a bond issuance, it's paid through the bond itself and not, it doesn't, it's not a separate with them. Lock and Lord, we do have, like I said, that's Joe Farside for, and that, that comes out of, again, the other, the other account.
Okay.
And that's been reasonable. I mean, his, like this year so far, we're only at with them, even with all we did, I've only got, I've only, I've got $18,000 and change that we've had in invoices from them on that piece.
But we, we...
That's this year, correct?
We've, we've been using Karen Grandy as a bond counsel for...
For years.
Years and years and years, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right.
And she, uh, she's been excellent. She's, uh, when we did, when we did the last bond for the clean water, for the sewer bond that we did the refi, Karen was absolutely amazing on, uh, on the work and the assistance on getting that bond in and done. And she's finalized the one that closes tomorrow, I believe it is, John?
Correct.
On the, on the latest one, on the, the second piece on the P-Day, so, oh, yeah.
Well, hopefully it's the last one for a long time. I, I hope we don't give her any work for a long, long time.
Agreed.
I just have a question, uh, actually, uh, John, uh, in the present budget, uh, you know, we're obviously seven months in, how, uh, what was the percentage? I know you gave your, uh, if you know, if you can think of what's in.
I wish I could remember off the top of my head. It's been another 13, 14 hour day. It's, things not quite under the forefront of my mind at the present moment. Um, I'll, I'll make sure to highlight it again on this day.
And I think everything was, at the six-month mark was somewhere in that 50% area.
That is correct with this one, and, and as far as this budget year over year, it's pretty close to the budgeted line item. Um, again, it's all dependent upon how much litigation comes up. So you, you can't plan for some things that happen, so there's sometimes more workload that gets distributed.
Current, we were, we're a little less than 300,000 all total in that line item so far for this, this fiscal year. Basically, yeah. So we're, we're pretty much on. We were a little over last year, it did go over, um, on it, but we, we're working to try to keep it from happening this year. Yeah, exactly, there were a lot involved last year.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is the Coventry Municipal Court. John, if you wanna handle the two courts, you, uh...
It's, uh, we pretty much kept these things pretty much straight in line. This is, uh, you'll see in the municipal court, it's only attributed to a regular employee, which is a part-time employee. It's just giving them a little bit more hours to do their, their labor. It's essentially all it is. It's still, still maintained being a part-time employee, uh, no change other than that and the matching of the FICA. That's all that is. Any other questions?
And the next one is probate court.
And this one should, from the top of my head, should be the exact same as it was previous year. Yep, uh, with a minor deduction here in the office supplies. I just looked at year-over-year trends on that one and noticed that it could be cut a little bit. So I cut $91 out of it. Any little penny I could grab, I could grab it, so you'll see that. Any other questions with that?
All right, excellent. Next one is actually John's department, it's the Finance Treasurer's Office.
This one right here, you'll see this, it's a small increase in year-over-year changes. In my line items, for example, uh, we'll say with the regular employees, I put in a small increase in expenditures there. Actually, in that, I budgeted in case there's a small increase in my line item here for municipal employees, but I also removed, um, I'm due a contractual increase in my pay. I removed my contractual increase in my pay next year. So that's why you'll see a deduction in here. I'm not taking my increase in pay. I don't want it. I'm doing what I can for the town, and I don't even live here. So this is trying to get as much as I can out of my town, out of my staff to try to get them as much help as possible. So that's why a little bit of an increase as well in overtime. They're struggling right now as it is to Lori's, particularly has a lot on her, on her plate. Also with this upcoming year with, uh, correction to sewer program in and of itself, I'm anticipating a little bit more overtime hours in correction. And what else here? Again, that's the group insurance and everything that goes along with that regular employee line item.
There, there were three union employees in that department, and that's why the increase in the salary line?
Is so minimal. It's so minimal, it's only 1,000, $1,642 in the event, and again, that's in the event that there is a small increase in, um, union changes. So I built that in there just in case. And again, and then the other one line item, you'll see a $100 bump is office supplies. It's really, I'm sharing probably much to Joanne Chagrin, her printer, a lot more because I know that it prints out at a cheaper rate than the one that's in my office. So I don't print color, I just, I, I don't wanna use the ink, so I push it over to some that's a cheaper cost. But there are some, we do a lot of printing coming up, and I, that line item seems to could use a little bit more. Anything else in there that I didn't touch on?
No other questions, thank you, John.
Very welcome.
Thanks, John. Next is going to be the tax assessor's budget. While Chris is coming up, uh, you'll notice if you look at the, the difference on that, it is 228,945 dollar difference from last year. 228,000 of that is the revale cost in the contract that you approved, uh, two months ago, a month and a half ago for that, but that's where his increases are in this line, in this budget. Uh, you'll notice at the top, there's been some switching around on temporary employees, regular employees. We're shift, he's shifting around, uh, the, the part-time people and how we have up there. But I'll let him answer the questions on, on the rest of it.
Yeah, they get mostly covered. If you look year over year, I think, um, not including the revale, I think my budget's only up maybe barely $1,000 year over year, so it's, that revale kinda skews things, so we've gotta kinda back that out to sort of do a real analysis of the, the office itself. As we all know, every three years we get a revale, so my budget's like ding, 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 you know, it's part of life. But, uh, any questions on, uh, office supplies and things of that nature?
My question, uh, Chris, really is just, you know, when, now, with this particular revale, it does every, you know, it's, it's three years that we're doing this, so we've gotta budget this for three, but that's only the, uh, the maintenance one is the, the major revale. What's, what's the cost of that one? Is it the same, uh...
No, that one is usually about double.
Yeah.
I'm not, offhand, I don't know what we paid specifically, but yeah, typically it's gonna be double. This one too, I mean, you don't see it in this budget line because, uh, it's a reimbursement from the state. They reimburse us 60% of the revale, um, for, for real property. I do have tangible in there as well, but, um, so we're gonna get probably back somewhere in the range of well over 100,000 of that 228 back as reimbursement from the state. That's in the budget somewhere else, I'm sure.
Okay, yeah, so we, yes, we reimburse the portion of that because the state make, you know, obviously mandates that we, that we do the revale. Now, just to clear something up, now, when, when, uh, when there is a revaluation, okay, it doesn't mean that we're, it, it, we're getting more money from the people, it just re, in essence, that seems to be that we, I got revalued, so therefore the town's making money on this. In essence, it reapportions the value of the tax levy, correct?
Exactly, that, that's the idea. I think we touched on this a bit when we did the, the bit itself, so, you know, you, you may have a, a neighborhood over here that may go up, say, 10%, you may have a neighborhood over here that goes up 5, so it may go down 1. What you're trying to do is, because the market shifts and it shifts in different areas in different ways, we're gonna get whatever the tax levy is, whatever the budgetary need is, we're only allowed to get 4% more from a tax levy as the prior year, but the way you disperse that levy, the, um, the burden to the different taxpayers themselves is what changes through the revale. So, yeah, I mean, sometimes, sometimes in a revaluation, if, depending on the way the town as a whole changes, like if, if everything's kinda consistent, then everybody's bills are kinda, just kinda ride the sort of normal inflation. If you have areas that they do really well versus areas that maybe don't or stay flat, these people that do better as far as the market goes, they may see a bigger increase than another area where maybe they didn't see as much of an increase. But overall, no, we can't, it doesn't allow us to get any more than that 4% over the prior year, even when you revalue. Just trying to, just trying to balance that out, make it fair to everybody, so, because the market changes.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you very much, Chris.
Sure.
Thanks, Chris.
Anybody else with any questions, huh? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. And in case I didn't mention it, uh, when you're done, if you'd like to leave, you can. Next is going to be the tax collector, Oney Cool.
Hi, Oney. Hi. My budget basically is contractual obligations, paper. Any questions? There's nothing to it.
Tony was gonna be quick.
No questions, no comments? Boy, you're good.
Anything? No? Good?
Board of Tax Assessment Review. And if you look on this, I'll let Chris.
Will you state your name?
Chris Les, Tax Assessor, uh, Board of Review. Um, there's literally nothing at all changed. We have five members each.
I gotta give you some advice.
Yes.
When you follow, Mrs. Who?
Yeah.
You should just stand up there and go ditto. To what Maureen said.
I know, I'm a glutton for punishment, I guess.
And you could be sitting down as quickly as her.
I know. All right, fine, there's no changes.
Tough act to follow.
Ditto it is, though, yeah, just, uh, just, it's the same thing. There's, there's nothing but payroll there anyway.
I, I do have...
My apologies.
See?
Yep.
Since there are, there's no line for employees, so what does match FICA mean?
They, um, for those members, the, they get paid as an employee like a W-2. They, they don't get 1099. It's my understanding that, uh, when I spoke to the treasurer at one point about that, she stated that at some point the auditor said that because you tell them where to be and when to be there, you can't 1099 them, you have to pay them through payroll and withhold and pay payroll tax on it.
So their fee, their, uh, amounts are coming out of the expenses for board, correct?
Yeah, so expenses, board members is...
As opposed to out of a payroll account, so it's...
Right, I'm not sure why it's still not in a payroll account, but it acts like a payroll. They... It, they, they get a check, we withhold their taxes, we pay payroll tax on it through the FICA and everything, and so that's why you see it on there, even though you'd expect them to be like contracted, but they're, they're tech, they're treated as employees.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ditto.
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 All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to get to one of our larger ones, and that is going to be, uh, Colonel McDonald for the Police Department.
Just for the record, ditto is not working here.
And just for the record, before we get started on this one, if you look down at, on the seven-ten, you'll see an increase of three hundred and, uh, ninety-four thousand dollars. There's. The very bottom on the difference, on the total budget difference.
Page seventeen?
Page seventeen of fifty-four, bottom of it on the right-hand side. There's three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. The Colonel has more than that in mandatory increases, which means there's been, uh, substantial cuts made in this budget over, and if, especially over his request, but even over last year, there's several line items that have been cut to bring this budget down to, uh, what we can afford, so. I turn it over to the Council for any questions.
Colonel? If the Council and/or the Manager were to say to you, "We need you to cut this budget another ten percent." Bodies, services?
Yeah, it would be both, uh, absolutely. I did a, just a quick call over to West Wallwork as a comparison today. They, they've had some overtime issues, I've talked to their chief. They're currently around eight hundred and fifty thousand in overtime right now with fifty-three officers. We're, we're at fifty-seven officers and we're about three hundred and sixty right now. So, it's, you know, water's going to seek its level there. It's going to be coming from one place or another if you cut those, those bodies down and you have minimum manning requirements. And obviously, uh, services would be, would suffer.
It's the only question I had.
Thanks, sir.
Does this budget take into account all the things that you're going to have to do to, to move into the new facility, maybe upgrade equipment, communications equipment, et cetera? So, I'm just wondering, um, you're not going to just take the old stuff from the old place and bring it over to the new place, so there must be some changes needed.
Some of it is going to go.
With some, but not everything, I'm sure.
So, what, what we're moving into over there will be provided by the bond, uh, furniture, FFNE, um, most of it'll be taken care of. We will take some things with us, though. So, I, as far as the move goes, it'll really be packing up your own stations and lockers, and then it'll be a one- or two-day move as far as just moving, um, equipment. So, I think we can do that in-house, uh, and if we even had to hire some movers, it wouldn't be too much of an expense. We could find it within the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions at all?
Colonel, I, I just have one question which, uh, which I, I had, uh, I'd asked last year, and I was just curious, uh, on the outsourcing of the, uh, work for, on the vehicles, et cetera, you know, mechanic work. Are, are we able to do more of that in-house, or I, I know that we, uh, there were some things, reasons that we couldn't, or whatever, or has anything changed in that area, really?
I, I don't, uh, think that anything's changed, Mr. Wasson, and I think we do the same thing we've been doing. It's about sixty-two thousand a year. You know, we're upwards of, um, seventy vehicles between a lot of stuff we have at the PD or, uh, equipment. Short of hiring a mechanic, which was tried, I think, about twenty years ago, and then that mechanic got absorbed over at DPW. I just don't see a cost savings. I mean, we manage it at sixty K a year. If you bring on a ma, a mechanic full-time.
Well, I'm not saying bring in on a mechanic, I'm saying that the mechanics that we have are, are, are not suitable to do that work, or they just can't do it?
It's more about diagnostics.
With the workload that they currently have, they could not take that on with the current workload that they have at DPW.
You could ask Kevin, but I think diagnostics is really the issue with our vehicles. It's, he's got diagnostic-specific, I'm, I'm assuming to his, his fleet, and ours would be a little different. There would have to be, I think, some significant change there.
Okay, because I guess we're just, uh, looking at the places that, you know, that we might be able to find some efficiencies, and again, you know, knowing that, uh, I, I'm just looking at the way that we've, you know, we have mechanics working for the town again, and not knowing exactly what their expertise are, et cetera, and doing it, and just trying to look under rocks here, you know, and see what we can come up with, so, thank you.
I, I can, Greg, I can tell you that, um, and, and, and this doesn't apply to all mechanics, but Kevin's mechanics are, are probably specialized in diesel equipment and, and the maintenance and upkeep of that diesel equipment. Normal gas-powered combustion engines, uh, are different. It, they're not interchangeable. The knowledge that goes along with work, and, um, it doesn't apply to all mechanics, believe me, but the knowledge, the expertise that needs to be applied in working on the different classes of vehicles are, are so wide and varied that, could Kevin's mechanics do it? Yeah, if they had the time, I'm sure that they could, because if they couldn't, they would educate themselves on how to, but to just throw that into the mix, two different skillsets.
Actually, you brought up a good point. Uh, do, do, the mechanics working for us have ASE certifications or those things all where? So, so none of the mechanics are certified in any particular area or expertise for any, okay?
One thing we do do with our fleet is we try to, you know, we're trying to streamline it in the SUV, Ford category, so that if we had a wreck like we did this year, we take that vehicle, we cannibalize it as much as we can, use parts and, you know, pieces off of that equipment, so that we can capitalize on every dollar we have as far as fleet maintenance.
Unfortunately, with the, with the modern trend, I think, is most departments are, are, are veering away from four-door rear-wheel-drive automobiles and going towards the SUV, heavier suspension, uh, more safety features, things like that. I mean, you know, if we were all, if everybody was still running Crown Vics, you could get spare parts out of your own parking lot, I'm sure.
Which we did for years.
Right. Unfortunately, with the, with the current trends, I think we're, everybody's trending away from those types of vehicles and into, so it's going to take a while to catch up and be able to even say, well, you know, we've got one that doesn't run anymore, but we've got another one that runs and needs a back bumper. We can take it off of that one and put it on, so I, I, I think we're still a few years from there.
I absolutely agree, Mr. Cody. I think we're close to getting there. Our SUVs on the back end of the fleet are about to age out into our, uh, detail fleet, and that'll start that process, but you're right on the money. I think we're a few years from that. But SUVs in the New England area are a good, uh, thing too for, like, the snow, and it's just the right call up here. You see it, the trend around the departments.
You just got to make sure you get the ones with the pursuit package, you know?
Absolutely. Although we discourage pursuits.
Next is going to be the civilian employees, and if you look at this one, we have a three-thousand-dollar increase in, uh, group insurance, medical, and yet their increase in this budget is only two thousand dollars, so they've, uh, they've cut this budget as well.
Does the civilian employ, does that cover your dispatches?
It does not. We have a separate budget for dispatch.
It does, because they are covered by Council Ninety-four, correct?
Although there's some Council Ninety-four in this budget, that's clerks, and then civilian employees like Therese, uh, our IT guy, Mike Brogi, and, uh, Bev, my admin assistant.
Okay, because my understanding is that Council Ninety-four has a raise contractual this year?
They have a contract that's up in January, in the end of December, so there's no, there's no raise at this point until, uh, negotiations.
Okay.
And the reason we've split these up like you're seeing with the civilians, dispatches, it's all mandated by the Transparency Portal, and that's why this, these budgets had to be broken down even further, and that's why you're seeing that. If there's no questions on that, then the next one would be the dispatchers. Colonel, there is an increase in this, in this one slightly in employee costs. Would you explain just what it's about?
There's some step increases there for people with longevity. There was also a few of our newer dispatchers, uh, took the, um, the medical stipend, so that's a little bit of a bump there to the medical. If you don't take your family medical, you can get more in salary.
How many dispatches, what we got?
Five and a one-part-time employee, five-point-five.
Any other questions?
Any other questions at all?
Overtime.
Overtime?
Yeah. Tell us a little bit more about overtime.
Sure, overtime, uh, you know, we've struggled a little bit in the overtime budget with our dispatchers because we haven't been able to solidify that final, uh, part-time position. We redesigned the hours and hired the part-timer about eighteen months ago, probably now, and we just consistently cannot keep that position filled, whether it's someone moving on. We had a, a dispatcher who moved on to be a Johnston police officer, Vanessa Wilcox, great new story, um, and we've had several, um, that just came in. We trained them, and they just didn't make the cut.
Stepping stone.
It is, in a lot of ways, and we, you know.
Part-time position, come to your department, learn, and move on to something full-time in another department.
We found it to be a difficult position to fill, the part-time, because the hours aren't great. It's Friday, Saturday nights, four to twelve, and a midnight shift on Sunday. So, it has to be the right person. They have to understand how to dispatch. It's a very difficult job, more so than you would think. It takes a lot of multitasking, and it takes the right person. So, I think when we get it filled and we solidify the group, uh, we'll find that OT comes right back to where it should be.
The problem with that position is they're, uh, if you're a fully-trained dispatcher, you can make substantially more money at other departments compared to what we pay, and you see that in occasion where they get, and they're moving on to something better. I know in Pawtucket, they're paid at almost the same rate as a police officer. It's a really well-paid position. Several other communities are the same way, so it, it happens.
I, I think you could find the right person if you could find somebody who was into day drinking and, you know, the shifts weren't cutting into their.
As long as they showed up.
You know, weren't cutting into their social time.
And next would be the Animal Control. And if you look at this one, again, this is a very small increase in this, uh, less than seven thousand dollars, and, uh, a good chunk of that is from the medical, the increase in the medical, and there is a slight increase in regular employee cost.
There's a little bump in animal care services here, too. Yeah, we had, I mean, we just found that we take a lot of animals in that need veterinary care, you know, and, and the community cares about those, uh, cases, and we try to publicize it as much as we can, and we oftentimes seek, um, uh, some penalties back from the people who get convicted of crimes against animals. So, we do our best to recoup those funds, but we found that we needed to bump that up a bit so that we could pay veterinarian care for certain animals that come into our custody.
Any other questions? Okay. Next on Hit Parade is the EMA Budget. Emergency Management Budget. That is, uh, seven, seven fifty. My eyes are starting to lose it at the end of the day. This budget is, uh, it's flat from last year. We are maintaining the same, uh, same expenditures across the board on this budget. Any questions? Excellent. And, uh, I believe, last but not least, the School Crossing Gods is the final budget that they have, and if you look at that, again, same thing, absolutely flat, no increases.
Yeah, Town Sergeant doesn't get a mention here.
Oh, I am, I am so sorry.
Can I plug for a raise?
Other than the Town Sergeant, flat, there's no increases.
What would a town lieutenant cost?
More than we can afford.
Can we get a lieutenant?
He does a good job.
I apologize. So, Town Sergeant, absolutely no increase in that one. It's same, uh, my understanding is he'd volunteer and come in on his own for free all the time.
Sergeant, if I was you, I'd pick it for more money, I'm telling you. I, I would, you know?
He's well worth it.
Okay, so now, last but not least for PD is the EMA Budget.
No, it's School Crossing Gods.
School Crossing Gods, I'm losing it here, I'm sorry. School Crossing Gods, guys. Oh, my God. This one is even as well. There's no increase in this budget. It's flat from last year, for the current fiscal year. So, again, as you can see, the Colonel is, and Therese have done a phenomenal job on, on doing everything we requested on this budget, up to and including, uh, the day before we pres, I presented this to you, I called them in and they cut a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of this budget to help to fund the additional three hundred for the bond payments that are necessary in the twenty, fiscal twenty budget. So, they have bent over backwards to, uh, to do everything they can to keep this in line under the circumstances. Their increases that you see are all mandated. The pension increase is huge, medical increases, and that's where those, they are, and they're still less than what, those increases are less than what the increase in the total budget because they've cut other line items, so I want to compliment them along with every other department head on what they've done this year.
Only because you brought it up, um, and believe me, I, I, I think my track record proves itself, the unfunded pension liabilities are very important to me. But, uh, we signed on to a pension stabilization plan with the state of Rhode Island, with Governor Raimondo when she was the Treasurer, twenty-year stabilization plan. In lieu of the fact that, again, this year, we're trying to budget down to get within the four percent range that thirty, fifty by law gives to us, um, have we thought about, for lack of a better term, refinancing that twenty-year term with the state of Rhode Island and seeing if they can, if we can stretch that out to twenty-two years or twenty-three years?
I was, I was just.
To bring our pension payments down.
I was approached by the leadership today in just for, in reference to that, and I am going to be contacting the state tomorrow to see if there's anything we can do, any way that we can, we can one, both, or all, or all three, see if we can make a readjustment on that.
And I just want, and I just want to say, not only to the Colonel, but to anybody in this room that's affected by the unfunded pension liabilities that the Town of Coventry is currently responsible for. It's not that I don't care about, or that I have no feeling for the position that those employees are in, but I was elected to look out for the financial interests of the taxpayers in the Town of Coventry, and although I want to see those unfunded liabilities get paid down, and for those pensioners in the future to be made whole by the Town of Coventry, and the Town of Coventry to fulfill the promises that we made to those employees when we brought them on, um, I, I think the fact that, with the current economy that we're in, if we can renegotiate that with the state of Rhode Island, uh, to the benefit of the taxpayers in the Town of Coventry, and take some of the weight off of the back of not only our residential, but our commercial taxpayers in the Town of Coventry, I think that would bode well for everyone, everyone involved, um, and I, and I don't think that in the long run, it will hurt the pensioners moving forward. It just renegotiates it. It doesn't relieve us of our responsibility, it just renegotiates it at the state level.
I, I agree, that's, we, we had that discussion today, as a matter of fact, uh, to see if the state would be open to a reamortization. And, and essence, uh, we've already come X number of years, you know, say, four or five years from the time that we started.
Me and you spoke about this.
When we did that, and now maybe to say that, okay, they, they expected it to be at a certain level by a certain year, you know, and again, our thought process was the fact that maybe by, you know, continuing on our path, but extending the time a little further would reamortize it and just make it a little easier. Uh, it, it's been so difficult to budget for capital needs, for any of that, but, but at the same time, you know, uh, covering responsibilities, but, uh, you know, to, to all of the pension people, et cetera. You know, we've come, uh, from, uh, from two thousand, from two thousand nine to being, I think it was nine-point-eight funded, percent funded, to, uh, now at this point in time, I think we're just over twenty percent funded, John.
Twenty-point-zero-two.
You know, so, so we've doubled what, you know, the percentage, you know, from, from where we, you know, when we started this, uh, actually, in a lot, less than time than, than the, the ten years. So, we want to continue on that path, uh, but, uh, it, uh, when you're talking the, the jumps over the years, it's, uh, it's been, it's been very difficult to add in the capital and, uh, other dollars that we need with that, so, but, uh, that, we spoke about that, and, and we'll see if, uh, a reamortization makes sense for, for, uh, everybody.
The overall pension, the overall pension increases between the three pensions amounted to, uh, almost five hundred thousand dollars, so it's almost a half million dollars between the three pensions. It was, I believe, two oh-five for the, the police, one-seventy on the SRP, and, uh, I believe it was.
Fifty, about fifty or so for.
Yeah, so a little bit less, but it was, uh, it's a substantial hit on, it's nearly half of the total increases that we're facing, that we're. that we're facing that were mandated. So it's, it's a big hit and we've got up the loose by trying and I will be contacting them and seeing what we can do on that.
You know, I mean, and I, back in 2004, when I met with you, Mr. Almonte, when he was the, you know, the audit general at the time, they had major concerns back then and it had been addressed for a little while, but then it went away again. Now it came back, we've readdressed it, and we certainly don't want to go away from doing that, but we've got to be able to try to, to make our ends meet, too, over here. And it's, it, it just becomes more and more difficult when each, you know, the actuarial amounts are changing, adding that. Whereas, and I, I don't think we're in as big a danger, but still on that fringe because it wouldn't take long to go back the other way. We don't want that to happen at all.
I think it would be reassuring to still move forward in a percentage way that was responsible, but obviously, for the town's sake, to look at that as, as also responsible.
I have a question. What would be the downside, what would be the downside of doing that?
The downside? It's just going to take longer to bring, to bring us up to a, a fully-funded pension.
Does it cost us more money to do that?
The less money that's sitting in investments, the less money we're going to gain on, on those investments. So if we're making money on them, if it's a good economy and those things are making money, then yeah, that's helping to, to cover the cost on that. If it's, if it's down, then yeah, we, we could be, so that's, that's probably the biggest down piece of it.
The biggest downside.
Right now, we are about forty, John, 41, 42% funded on the municipal, and I believe 21...
It's 20.0, it's 20.2% funded on the police, I'm looking at that one right now. For the municipal, it is 42.3%. My two cents and a little bit of this, what it's worth, it's, the police pension, it needs a little bit more time to grow when it comes to that 20%. If you're going to look to re-amortize, I would probably come to the table saying, at a given year, doing a, grow to a certain point, maybe whatever, it's 50%, 40%, whatever your number is, you're going to pull out your hat and say then, at that point, we maybe slow it down, rather than starting at a given date. That's my two cents regarding that. Because again, as, as Mr. Wazik pointed out, it's about what is actually funded and what rolls in that account which generates more interest income.
Well, John, are we using the same projected return on our investment as the state is of 7.25%?
No, the state is using a higher discount rate over time. I believe the state is 7.5 or even higher.
I think they reduced it to 7.25, but...
Now they're at 7.25?
You can use whatever number you want. Are we using the same assumption?
We're using a lower number even.
And are we meeting our assumption?
Correct, we are. I just pulled the last number from this last year and our assumption was 6, 6.9%. And we actually, this last year, it hit 8%. So we did much, much better this past year. But again, this past year's economy was, as everybody knows who's followed the market, was extremely good. However, that's a cross-section in time. When you're thinking pension, you're thinking 50 years timeframe. So over a span of years, you're going to have ups and you're going to have downs.
Right, you have to, you have to be able to survive the ebbs and flows of the market.
Exactly.
Because it's a long-term, it's, it's not...
That's why we use that 7, so yes, we did much better this year, but then there might be another year in which we do 6, and...
But if you look at the long-term success, we're right in line with...
We're right in line with what our discount rate is.
The 7, and that's why we, we've kept it where it is.
And we're, and there's plans to move it down in the future. A little, tweak it a little bit, maybe to 6.75, but not this year, and not next, I wouldn't say next year as well, just because if you move that discount rate then, and we have to fund it at a certain level, then that means that the town has to put more money in to the account. So by moving your discount rate down, it means that your town has got to fund it somehow.
Well, I mean, if you follow the market, you know, it, it, it almost, it's almost predictable in a 15-to-20-year term where it bubbles and it bubbles and it bubbles and then it bursts. But within three years, it starts to recover and you start to get to that break-even point again. So even if, you know, like you said, last year, we did better. So out of that 15-year term, if we have four bad years, but we have 11 years where we actually did better than our projection, we're on the right track.
Correct.
We're on the right track. I just, re-amortization makes sense, I think, from a business standpoint, for the taxpayers.
The numbers that were chosen were all, in essence, for the state's comfort level as to where they wanted us at 60% funded and over X number of years, and then 100% funded over the other years. So I, again, the, that was their comfort level as to the percentage funded. You know, we've, we've been meeting those obligations and more going forward.
And so, back to the budget piece here, for their line item and that pension line item, it is actuarial determined number. And that number is, comes from this report, which I interject into here.
Correct. So Colonel, I don't know where we got from animal control to where we are, but thanks for letting us ramble.
Absolutely. It's a very interesting topic for all of us, so I appreciate it.
Well, the pensions were going to the dogs, that's why.
It's going in the other direction.
I think, you need five minutes?
Yes, please.
Sure, can we take five minutes?
We done with PD?
I think, I think we have gone through there.
Colonel, Therese, thank you very much.
So at that point, why don't we take a bit of a breather here?
Thank you very much.
Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay, motion taken, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Go ahead.
Well, we're a cooling center in the summer, we're a heating center in the winter. Whenever large swaths of town are without electrical power, they all come to us. To check their email, to print documents, to charge their phones, to get books because television's off. And so it just made sense to us that in any of those instances, we should be able to provide electrical power to the town. So, we will look into a grant for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Which, by the way, we had Mr. McGee brought a company in this past week to run through the building and run through and set up and give us an estimate on what one would cost to put one in for the building. So, we're looking to try and get some numbers at least on what it would go for.
The entire building?
We'd like to do the entire because again, we're shutting down phones for the town, we're shutting down everything when this building goes out. So if we just lose power here, the next door, Human Services, POCS and REC, all of those computer systems go out, so they're losing it all. So that's why we're looking at the whole thing as well. The big issue actually is the HVAC system, so that's where the requirements are, the heat, I mean the electrical requirements are big on those, so that's the biggest piece. But, any other questions on your budget?
No.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blanchett, thank you. Next, we're gonna do Bob Robelod from Human Services.
925.
Back a couple, yeah, 925.
Right in front of the library.
All right.
First of all, I do appreciate all the descriptions each of the departments before the budget, so as a new person, it really helped me to understand a little bit more about what the group is doing. And I think even, we had goals from Recreation Department, so that was nice to see, to start off a department's budget with the goals that they want to achieve. So I thought that was a nice add-in and a value add, so thank you very much, I didn't mention that at the beginning, but I thought it was good to see. I don't have a question on this one. Just saw increase, again, there's overtime and...
I thought it was the, when we originally talked about the question of money is to move from the location once the new building is done.
Yeah, well, I'm always interested in that.
Yeah.
Do you have money to move, or is everyone packing a box?
Actually, we've already done the move, so we know how it's done, because we had to move from Wood Street to... So, I think we were able to streamline a lot of the process as well. We were able to do a big shredding from documents we had that were 20 years old. So we were able to actually minimize our space, we're actually smaller, we're gonna be smaller when we move back. So, there's an opportunity for us to streamline services. And we're gonna be doing some impactful things on how folks are going to be able to get services here in town. We're gonna be a computerized program to check in, check out, follow our statistics, be able to kind of move from the old style of pen and paper on how we did our stats to a computerized system called My Senior Center. And to bring that forward and be able to provide state-of-the-art, I think, services for people who use our building, whether it's to volunteer, we'll be able to track all of those statistics as well. The whole goal is to move us back to streamlined department. So, we've learned a lot in this move, and we've also recently become unionized, our department. So a lot of the increases that you're seeing are contractual, and also the need to increase our overtime expenditure is directly related to the need to fulfill our requirement with the union when we have overtime, our needs, so...
Thank you.
Their biggest increase is actually the medical increase.
Actually, that's, I was gonna, you know, that's large, could you just talk about that for a moment, Ed, the medical increases, they're huge.
Yeah, I had that down too.
The medical increases are, we're looking at a projected 9% increase on our medical costs and another 3.5% on the Delta Dental cost. So this is projected from the trust, we're hoping those numbers are lower, but for safety reasons, I put it in, we put it in at the max amount, hoping that we will be reduced down. We're hoping to be more in line with like 6, which is what they're saying maybe, so we're still working on that, same thing when we get to the 950. We've got some numbers there with our workers' comp stuff, but again, we do not have finalized numbers from the trust and we won't have them for another...
The 23rd, I think it was, the date that they were coming out, they said they should supply us with the finalized number or whatever that increase should be. But again, we can talk about that more specifically when we hit 950.
But that's where the big increase is coming out of that, and again, hopefully some of this will get reduced when the numbers actually come in, if they will be lower than what we're anticipating.
All right, great, thank you.
So I have one other question. I noticed that in many departments, there's a line item for like auto, gas, fuel, oil. So, does each department have its own vehicles and what they're using to maintain that vehicle, keep it running, it's charged to their department, is that how it's working?
That is correct, if they have a vehicle, then they're usually maintaining that vehicle or expending it out directly from their budget, according to that.
Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We can move on to the Planning Department if you'd like, and we'll get Caroline out of here as quickly as possible. And we're gonna start with 940.
Yep, 940.
Okay, again, if you look at the bottom line on this one, there's a less than $8,000 increase on this, and Caroline, I mean, most of it is in employee expense on step raises that are part of contractual that we've got no control over. You look at their other lines that have been cut, so this is a very minor increase on this budget, if you've got any questions for her.
One quick one, under Professional Services, there was just a slight increase to 13, can you explain that?
Sure, so, once we wrap up the comprehensive plan, we have 18 months to get our zoning ordinance in line with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. I've talked with the manager, I do not want to hire out for that, I'd like to do it in-house. But I'd also like it to be well illustrated and possibly find a sort of online portal where it's more than just a PDF. So that's where that is, and it's not something I've gone and got quotes for, but that's about what I think that would cost. We also may need some money for zoning enforcement, should that come up.
And if you look at the adjusted budget on her for 18, 19, that's actually the amount that projected she'll spend on this year. So, we simply put it to where she's gonna spend this year, to keep it, again, keep it in line with what the actual expenditures are.
I need somebody to explain step increases. I thought that the majority of our employees were covered by Council 94 in the contract that they negotiate for their employees. I know what a step increase is in the School Department when it comes to teacher salaries, but this is new to me, when we're talking about step increases for employees in planning or in zoning.
There is an administrative pay plan in play that the council votes on any time there's a change, or any time, like last year, the manager increased all of the non-union salaries by two percentage points. So that plan, and there's one year...
To keep it in line with our union employees, correct?
Correct, it was kept in line with that. But there's, typically, there's a one-year step, there's a two-year step, there's a three-year, four-year, seven-year, I think it goes to 10, 15...
And a 20.
And a 20, so those steps occur, and there's an increase in their salary base, effectively seniority, which Council 94 has the same thing based on seniority.
It's a hard dollar that's in there, and then that's that hard dollar step, once they hit that...
When we talk about step increases, we're talking about non-union employees.
Well, it could be both.
Could be both.
It could be both, because 94 also has...
For example, myself, we'll just use myself, administrative employee, I technically should be getting a step increase this upcoming year, I'm choosing again not to. But then there you have the union employees as well that have the same type of schedule.
Based on seniority.
Based on seniority, but it goes along with, if you look at anybody's job designation, there's a line for each one of the years that they're there for.
If you'd like, I can send that out to you guys if you'd like a copy of it so you can see it, please. Now, one of the things you're gonna notice on it, there's absolutely no consistency in the steps, either across the board, there's no set percentage on what they go. It's a mishmash of the town manager at the time, whatever he decided, if they were making a new position, what the jumps were gonna be. So you don't have something that actually has consistent, you know, say a 2% jump from year one to year two. It's a dollar amount that varies completely without a set percentage increase across the board on all of the steps.
Is there a policy on this matter? Because I know in the School Department, we've been working on a policy for administrative compensation.
Yeah, the administrative pay plan, getting that one out, is all in the town policy as well as, you know, you're voting on to increase that by any changes to that.
So it might be good for us to review it soon.
Yes. But yeah, that's why you'll see those increases though, for union as well as non-union.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Planning and zoning are basically the same, I do wanna sort of highlight that both of them have a line item called Professional Services. That is purely for stenography, which is required, and that is reimbursed by the applicant, it doesn't go back into that same budget, it goes back in the general fund. But that's just basically kind of floats it up front, so we can pay for the bills. And then, on Conservation Commission, there's a slight increase in those professional, they have been monitoring bacteria levels at Lake Tyog, and they would like to do that a little bit more.
I just wanted to let you know that she is jumping departments right now, she's not talking about specific line items, she is jumping to different departments.
Yeah, Conservation Commission, which is my department.
Budget codes.
They would like to explore some of the outfalls, a more in-depth exploration of the bacteria levels at Lake Tyog.
When I was, excuse me, when I was looking on the web just to get a little more information about these commissions, the list of people who are on the commission is not updated, it doesn't seem to be updated. It seemed to be an updated list as of November 2014, so I'm wondering how soon we could actually get an updated list of people who are on some of these commissions on the web, so that if any voters want to maybe contact someone, they would have an updated list.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that actually, sort of IT.
It is IT, I will have Cody work on that the next couple of days to update all those lists that are online.
That would be fantastic.
If they're outdated, then we will get them brought up to speed on where they belong.
And do we still have openings on the Conservation Commission, it seems that...
I believe we do, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, specific questions?
Would you start over again, please?
We're all done, did you know that? Yeah, we're all done.
Everybody back. And the other one is Land Trust, which actually has a decrease in the overall line item on Land Trust by about $1,700.
I also want to point out that, just because it just hit my mind, when the question came up during the presentation about that revenue stream and you asked about the land company, I can't remember what that definition was off the top of my head. It actually directly relates to the Land Trust, that's the piece that's generating, which is in... That was it, it just struck me.
The next one is Economic Development, which has got zero in that one, but it's still left in. And then the next one will be Historic District Commission, is also one of Caroline's, and that's got a, an increase of like $1,700 in it.
Well, I think it's a decrease overall, because as you know, they're in transition. And so that would fund some of their startup programs that they want to do, like the House Plax and that sort of thing.
Page 46 of page, of 54, page 46.
It's a $1,700 increase.
946.
Page 46, this is 45.
Historic District Commission, there we are.
I was wondering why her paper had numbers on it and mine didn't, I was on the wrong page.
He was looking at a blank page.
That's the budget.
Can't speak to that.
That's what the budget is.
All right, any further questions?
Well, obviously, we made an adjustment in that, this past, you know, that was part of the adjusted budget that John was talking about in the Professional Services. We had 4,000 and it went to 12, 10, so, and then we, you know, so, or was that just the, I don't know why that went down, but that, are you looking at that, John? Okay.
I know that we had quite a long discussion on this one, I thought we had a long discussion and off the top of my head, I can't remember all the different, because there was a lot of moving components in this one.
Moving stuff around, something increased, that's where...
Yeah, that gets back to my zoning enforcement budget in that Historic Preservation had budgeted to do a study of the Arc Right Bridge. We found a way to get Roger Williams to do a lot of that work for free, so that budget was sitting there, I had to pay epsilon, so we did many budget transfers, so...
All right, good, I'm all set, anybody else have any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Caroline, thank you.
Well, Mr. Manager, I want to apologize for being late until the party heads out there, I probably committed, and I'm sure that the Vice President handled it well.
I can't gavel him down, he took the gavel away from me.
Well, I thank you for appearing this evening, sir, thank you. I know you had a prior commitment, so...
And create a principles back, recess is over.
So we are right in line now to go to, if we go back to the continuation of the book. Because we've actually got two main ones and then our 950 that we're gonna deal with. But I'm gonna bring, we'll bring up Raynor up next, we'll leave Kevin for last, sorry, Kev. You've got the bigger budget.
910.
910 on this one, please. And again, just to, in reference to this budget. Ms. Blumenthal was, has made, along with myself and John, we've made some, unfortunately, some substantial cuts into the requested budget that she had to the tune of about a little over $200,000. Up to and including, again, that last day, she cut almost an additional $25,000 out of that at the last second to help to fund that $300,000. So, I really appreciate her, as well as Kevin did $100,000 out of his, so, there's been a lot of cooperation with all the department heads. If you look at her primary budget, we're only looking at a total increase on this budget of $20,000 only. It's a lot of money, I know that, it's a million-two budget though, so this is not, it's not a lot. Again, if you look through, you'll find some of the line items wherever it is, I mean, she's got $11,000 in pay increases for, again, step raises and contractual increases on there, and some temporary employee increases that she needs to make because of some of the programs.
Minimum wage went up from 10, 10 to 10.50, so that's the primary reason, and then we have, most of my employees are union, so those are step increases as well.
So as an example, those two line items alone are $24,000 in increases, yet their total on this, total budget increase is only 20. You look down, you're gonna see a lot of cuts, there'll be some additions, but there is a lot of cuts in this budget.
If I could talk about one of the cuts, I would hope you would reconsider putting back in the budget, I spoke to town manager as well about this. Our repair operating equipment, that has to do with any power tools, any equipment that we need to repair for maintenance, and that was completely wiped out. So I would consider putting at least the 4,482 back in. Also, last year, the actual may not reflect what we need because there was a spending freeze in March, so I wasn't able to spend my full budget. So repairs have been delayed, which increases, you know, maintenance in the long term.
I've explained to Ms. Blumenthal that that is one, that line item we are looking at, seeing what we can do to readjust from somewhere else to give her, if not all of it, at least some of it or most of it back in that line item to give her the funds that she's gonna need.
It's even less than what we requested the year before. And then I would also please reconsider for the $800 for traffic and street signs, we've expended our budget essentially this year. And that has to do with greenway signs, yield to traffic signs, yield to pedestrian signs, so it's important that we have that in our budget.
Line item, is that the signs?
That is 34000, so that's $800 there. You also notice that we took out our bus, we cut it by, I think, over $10,000. And our recreation supply budget, which goes for nets and scoreboards and everything else related to hard court services and fields, that was cut as well. So, as well as what we want as far as our trucks and things that are falling apart, which I'll have to raise through program fees now to fund it. So I was hoping that you can at least consider putting some of that money inside the, don't have to ask so much from the public.
If I may, we've had some conversations earlier about possibly putting more of the financial responsibility for some of your programs, the ball fields. A lot of, like you have a dedicated ball field in back of, I'm just using this as an example, girl softball users, pretty much that's all that uses that. Why can't we set up some, why can't we set up some kind of a program where they maintain that area? They pay for their lighting, we don't use that lighting, I think the league could pitch in a little more to save us some funds, you know, if it's dedicated solely to that league.
So that's interesting, because a lot of towns are actually, we're communicating, other directors, other town councils have actually called me, because we're one of the few towns that actually charges community leagues to play on their fields. Most do not or charge a minimal fee of like $10 a child. But as I said, most communities do not charge at all, and there's only about two fields that are not really shared, and sometimes they do allow other leagues on it. But all of our fields are shared by multiple people, in fact, we have to have a meeting soon because we have to somehow figure out how to divvy up the time, because there's so much of a need in Coventry for that. They also replace all their light bulbs, saving us thousands of dollars. The electrical bill is high, but they don't use it that often, so, and they used to have control of some of the fields and the buildings, and the problem is that because of the overturn of boards and volunteers and parents, they weren't properly maintained, which is why we had to take them back and why we had to do all those repairs now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a thought, we'd have to really be creative and think about, you know, other ways to, if you have multiple leagues shared in the fields, and maybe we get multiple incomes from all the leagues, you know...
And they do, and they also contribute, like Little League is buying a new thousand-plus-dollar scoreboard, and they, other leagues are contributing with labor or infield mix, because we don't have enough. We probably need probably $50,000 to maintain our fields, I think we have a few thousand to maintain them, so they do contribute a lot as far as in-kind donations and other things.
The, let's talk about the snack bar, the snack bar, do we only have one at Payne Field?
There is one at Payne Field and one at Wood Street, so the bid is just up for review by the town manager. But we, they pay for electricity and water and lighting, and then they give a percentage to the town, which goes to fund maintenance of the concession stands.
But we pay the electricity, we pay...
No, the vendor does.
The vendor does.
And that goes into the general fund, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
And the other leagues haven't been using them because they're in disrepair, so we're actually working with the School Department.
I know that your predecessor spent a lot of time, a lot of time, chasing grants.
Yes.
And I only know that because when I was the president of the council, he used to drive to whatever job I was working on to get me to sign paperwork so he could submit these grant requests before the end of the deadline. And, I mean, he chased me all over the state getting me to sign paperwork, believe me. But it was grants for some of the bigger equipment, the mowers and tractors and things like that. How much of that are you currently, or is someone in your department currently doing?
So, I've actually spoken to several organizations, and unfortunately now because of all the municipalities wanting those, there's no capital funding for those needs anymore. They're not funding things like that, they're not funding for trucks or mowers or stuff like that, so I've been raising the funds from program fees as well, so it's not coming out of the operating budget. But they're more focusing, they're not even focusing on playgrounds anymore, they're focusing on things like ADA accessibility and improvements to... to infrastructure such as signing on a community center.
I know that the greenway, I still call it the bike path, so, you know, what do I know? I know that adds a lot of responsibility to the plate of your department, to, to the people in your department, as far as cleaning and maintenance and, and things like that. Do we have the option of, because the, the federal government redoes all of this stuff, and then they say, here it's yours, but you're responsible for maintaining it and upkeep and, and things like that. And we all know, people don't pick up after themselves. So, or their pets. So.
So, we have added more dock stations, as well as if you go to West Warwick, if you go to Western Coventry, you can see a distinct difference of the greenway that we maintain versus other entities. And I think it's a pride of Coventry, but we also are getting volunteers to help with cleanup as well. So, I reached out to CCAP in West Warwick, and they're going to send, like, over the summer, they send volunteers to help clean up different parks, including the greenway.
I'm just wondering what our options are to tell the federal government, no, we don't want it. You put it in, you maintain it. We, we're all set.
I, I do know that the state is having, like, they have to find a new vendor to also maintain their area as well. So, I know it's an issue with other folks.
I've always made a point that before, when they was offering the greenway to us, if we can't maintain it, I don't want it. It does represent us. And if we can't make it look good, like, it's true, you walked from Coventry to West Warwick, and there was quite a difference of how our greenways kept up.
I mean, we only get compliments on it. People come to us all the time, and they say, we really appreciate it, we enjoy it, it's our main source of recreation in the community. So, and I think it's a sense of pride. Well, we, we have the equipment to maintain it, and we probably spend about once a week. So, we have it in our schedule to maintain it as it is.
I have one question. You have your own fleet of vehicles, and you have a maintenance repair. So, my question to you is, what are the pros and cons of maintaining your own fleet maintenance department versus combining it with some other department or farming it out to a vendor?
So, we used to do it out to a vendor, and it was very costly, because we have everything from lawn mowers to tractors to pickup trucks to dump trucks. I also know that DPW is, and Kevin can speak to this, they are at capacity, as well as discussed by the, the police chief. So, what's good about it, if there's an issue on one of our fields, like, our lead mechanic can go out and fix something. Everything is housed in one location, and that makes things more efficient. So, it saves money in the long run to have our own garage.
How many mechanics do you have there working now?
We, we have one mechanic, and that's sufficient.
So, he's, he's covering all kinds of?
Everything from vehicles to lawn mowers to tractors, an excavator, to all of our leaf blowers, to our trimmers, to all the equipment we use every single day, essentially from April through the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions on this?
I just got one. Testing services, what?
So, that is for everything from, like, well testing, it's required by RIDM. It's also for, like, alarm testing and fire extinguisher text, testing. Unfortunately, in the past, it wasn't done up to code. It wasn't done for all our buildings. But, we looked at it, and we assessed things, and we spoke with the fire department, and said, these are the things that need to be done. And that also includes Briar Point Beach testing for the season.
Is that where the fee would come out of it, where such as we had issues at Ty Oak Lake this year and had to be tested? Is that the same?
Correct.
Any other questions on this?
What are our, and I think I already know the answer, but what are our, what are our options on raising the fee for out-of-town residents to be able to use Briar Point Beach?
Right now, we base it on what the state charges, but I am willing to raise the prices for out-of-town.
I'm not looking to raise it for in-town residents.
No, out-of-town, for non-residents, absolutely.
I'm talking about out-of-town residents that come in and use the facility. Is there? Because I was under the impression that we could not charge out-of-towners more than double what we charged residents, because federal money was used to purchase and develop Briar Point Beach to its current configuration. And under those guidelines, we can't charge out-of-towners or non-residents more than double.
I can look into that, but right now, we do what the state charges. So, whatever they charge, like, residents versus non-residents.
Are we charging our residents the same as we're charging non-residents?
No, absolutely not. Like, for something could be as little as a dollar for a child to walk in with his mother, you know, to, I think, them, to season passes, which are significantly less for residents. We encourage residents to attend and enjoy the beach. And I wish I had those numbers with me, but I don't have it for the fee.
Yeah, I, I.
It's on our website.
I'd be interested in those numbers, and I'd be interested in somebody doing the research to see if it's true that we can't charge non-residents more than double. And because, listen, non-residents, if they come in to use our services, you know, if this doesn't sound politically correct, I'm sorry, but we should be getting as much from them as we can near using our services.
I agree. And so, we do charge significantly more. We do that for our programs and anyone who's not from Coventry, resident of Coventry. So, there is definitely a difference currently, but unfortunately, I don't remember that offhand. But, I did speak to RIDM when we were going to put the gate in to see if there's any restrictions, like, anything that, because they, we purchased it with federal funds, and they said, no, it is part of the town of Coventry, do with it essentially what you will. So, I can check if that also means for the dollar amount. But, we do charge more for non-residents. And I have noticed since I've started that more non-residents have not been in the area. And I think with the gate, too, that will discourage people after hours, non-residents.
Rayner, do you track this, do you track residents versus non-residents?
We absolutely do.
The fees collected?
We do. And so, that also goes back to the general fund.
So, maybe you could come up with a figures?
I, I.
Yeah, I can send it to you.
I, I would venture to guess that when you're tracking fees collected from non-residents compared to residents, I would almost think in my head, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we're collecting more in fees from residents. But, I would think that we're doing that because they're using the facility more often, because they're closer by, they're right in town, it's, it's more convenient for them.
It's a local beach, and we discourage, like, large groups from going into, because we did raise the prices for that. We did lower the prices for local veterans and youth. However, non-residents, as I said, we did raise the prices.
Well, and, and the flip side of that is, is if we don't make it as attractive for non-residents, then there's more services available for our residents. And if they're not using those services, there may be a cost savings associated with not having to spend your employees or the people in your department not having to spend as many hours at that facility cleaning and maintaining, because there's less of a mess, because it's not being used as much.
Of course, there is one incident. But, the beach is actually, since I started, has, it's, I don't know the last time you guys went there, but it is beautiful, it is clean. We, we worked our system to make sure there's different checks after a long weekend, but with the gate, that should help as well. But, it is, is a beautiful area. We have programs there. We have morning yoga. We cater to residents. We have different beach programs. We're going to have movie nights. We had movie nights last summer. So, it's, and it's for residents to enjoy, and we cater to residents.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, the next department, you see now, you had the order we're going in.
Thank you, Rayner. Thanks, Rayner.
Thank you.
What's the next, you're just going right in order in the book?
Uh, we are going, no, we're going to Department of Public Works, which is the last department aside from the nine fifty accounts and some of the other small things at the end that we'll do. John and I'll take care of.
What is the number here?
That is going to be eight-ten. You're going to go to page twenty-four. It's going to begin with engineering. Eight-ten is the department.
Yeah, if you can find that. Do you guys, you guys need a break?
We already had one.
You already had one?
Yep. Twenty-four fifty-four. Category eight-ten. Look at the tab. If you, if you look at the tab first, you see the number.
Page twenty-four.
If you want to get a little presentation or anything for us, Kevin, or just looking for questions?
I'd like to say, I'd like to say a few words, please, based upon what I've heard this evening. Starting off with the comments that were made by Mr. Arnett and questions asked by Ms. Dixon about moving money within the, within the department because of line items. Without the ability to do that, we would have trucks parked because parts, the parts line exceeded. I'd have no tires on some of the vehicles, because the tire line gets exceeded because of fuel, gas, gasoline, prices go up, or we have more use. If that price goes up, we end up having to mix. We had breakdowns, building, building maintenance. We had unit on top of this building, we had air conditioning on the annex building. Those are unforeseen. So, when we do that, you might see, and it's, it's a false thought that we don't need the money in those departments. But, at the time of the year, when we have those things come up, I've got to pull that from a different, different line item in order to continue operations. So, the overall budget is not being increased. As a matter of fact, as of Monday on three, on three-four, my statement of operations is run every single Monday, and our department is at, we are at sixty-eight percent, sixty-eight points percent of our budget, budget line we're supposed to be, which is one percent under. So, we keep line of what we're looking for, and it's a shuffling game, trying to keep all the operations, there's so many moving parts that are going on, that we have to make those change, those budget transfers. Gas prices going up as far as national grid, if we have an issue with, with a building that is getting more use, whether it be through recreation, the school department utilizing the administration building. If there's more use to the building, there's more gassing, because now those, those rooms are normally unoccupied, become occupied, so we have to heat them. So, there, I, I cringe when I, when I hear people say, well, we're, we're not going to have any more budget transfer. You're, you're, we can't not do that, because these departments, especially Public Works, we cover seven different divisions, too many fluid points to this bill, to this, this budget that we can't adjust to. So, we have to do the budget transfers.
Well, thank, thank you for that clarification. But, I just noticed when I was looking through every single department, and I was curious to understand why, when we looked at requested budget and we looked at the difference, how that number was derived. And then I went back to look, because I started off by looking, where were the increases, decreases? Did I see any trends, et cetera? So, I understand that there are always contingencies, but I think we all realize that we've got to try to get to the point where we are managing to the actual budget that is, is given. And I understand that there would be contingencies. You don't know how much snow is going to fall, how much salt you're going to need, et cetera.
With, without the council, and just not, you know, not pointing fingers, but without any capital budget, we have equipment that continues, is aged and continues to break down. Those repair costs and the amount of time that my mechanics take to keep a lot of this garbage running in order for us to keep the, the town going, I've got, I've got a situation right now that I've got, of just the most recent vehicles, I've got twenty-one pieces of equipment that we use every day that are either between fifteen to thirty-three years old. The grader that grades most of the Western Coventry roads is thirty-one years old, and it's already had a powertrain, which is a motor and a transmission done back in nineteen ninety. How much money do we put into a thirty-one-year-old piece of equipment? Our single air compressor is thirty-three years old. Frontline trucks are, I just went back fifteen years, most of them are, are between fifteen to twelve years old. Those cannot, they're in, they're in the day-to-day operation frontline, whether it be through summer projects or through the winter projects. We totally fund all of our snow plow through in-house. We do not go out to bid to anybody else. We take care, we have twenty-six routes, and we keep those trucks going. My mechanics is, this last weekend, in three days with all these storms, have been working around the clock, keeping everything moving. Even during a storm, I've got four mechanics that are working in two-man crews just to keep the trucks going. I have to take one person out just to get him to do a plow group, because we are so short-staffed, because of either retirements, injuries, disabilities, and just, we're just not there. So, I'll get into all that if there's any other questions, but please keep in mind that this budget that you see before us, before you, I have forty-seven, it's increased by ninety-seven thousand dollars total, ninety-seven thousand four thirty-four, which is basically a one-point-seven percent increase. Of that, forty-seven thousand seven ninety-eight is all contractual work and mandated cuts from the manager. I have fifty-five thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, which is employee wages, group insurance, and Delta Dental increases, for a total of a hundred and three thousand six eighty-eight. My budget's only going up ninety-seven thousand. So, I've already got a, you know, I've had sixty-two hundred dollars that I've actually had to find additional cuts in the budget to make this all work. So, as we go through there, understand that we've actually cut, my budget's been cut four hundred and seventeen thousand. So, when you say about ten percent, I'm pretty close to ten percent, probably eight and a half percent, what we've already been cut from what we requested, because we know we're going to need. And going forward into this budget, even if it's approved, already know, because that we are not going to be able to substantiate some of these line items, because we know this year that the line items are exceeding what we asked for now. We were bumped back to where we are this year. No one ever already, we're already over budget in that line item. So, there's a lot. We're going to get, we're going to get it done, but there's just no, nowhere else to cut without losing services. So, I'll open it up to any questions you have.
We don't expect that this whole budget, if we're cutting, is going to be done by the municipal side. We both have a municipal side, school side.
Turn your mic on.
Turn your mic on.
It is.
Okay.
It's the first time, maybe it's not plugged in. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I've got a big mouse, you should be able to hear me. But, we have, we also are going to be discussing with the schools, because they've got a, they've got a cut also. We've got, you know, many more meetings with them. The municipal side's a small part of this entire budget, when you look at the grand scheme of things. So, you know, we don't expect everybody from the municipal side to make up the deficit that we have or the issues we have. So, I mean, we're not looking, we're already, I, I looked this budget over the municipal side, and we, it's pretty much down to bare bones. We get that, you know, but it's, it's difficult. We, we have some.
I appreciate that, Mr. President. You know, we, on the municipal side, and I wish all of my colleagues were here still, we're down to, we are down to bare bones. And unless you want to start losing services, that's in, by reducing, because I'm hearing rumors that, oh, have the municipal pilot, like, municipal side lay off people. You're not going to have the services you have now. I think we're exemplary throughout the state of what we provide to this community. Anything less, you're decimating, and taxpayers are going to feel the difference.
My problem with that, and it's been brought to our attention, that we could save five hundred thousand dollars if we wanted to eliminate bulk pickup, eliminate, you know, the transfer station, and so on and so forth. We've been raising taxes to, to make do with pensions and every other obligation we've had. The last thing we want to do is have to cut services. People enjoy having their services. I enjoy the bulk pickup. I, they need it, because if we don't have services like that, this town will end up being a garbage dump everywhere, in western end, every road that's, that's available, find mattresses and find everything else dumped in. We don't want that. We're raising taxes. We get it. We've had to raise them the last several years. But, we, you know, the people do not want us to cut services and raise taxes. That's just the way it is.
I'm available for any questions you have on any of the departments.
This is, he's got a, Kevin's got a bare bones budget that is a reduction over last year's budget, including doing everything that he does every day for, throughout this town. And to even begin to think he could take ten cents off of his budget is beyond what we could do with what he's got.
Kevin.
I mean, I'm just recommending that we don't touch it.
You're, I'm going to ask an opinion, based on what's in front of you tonight, based on your professionalism, based on how many years you've been doing what you do. Do we save any money at all combining Parks and Recreation with DPW? Just your opinion. And, and if you say I can't answer that, with, I don't have the numbers in front of me to be able to answer that, I understand that. But, I'm looking for a professional opinion, because everybody talks about consolidation and consolidation, and we need to consolidate things, and we could save money by doing this. Do we save any money by consolidating Parks and Recreation and DPW?
I mean, the entire department?
The entire Parks and Recreation Department into DPW. The entire Parks and Recreation Department into DPW. What are the savings and are they astronomical?
Do you mean, do you mean POCs or POCs and Rec? Because POCs could be eas- could be integrated, but Recreation, I, I think you're, I think you're needing to separate the two.
Is Parks and Recreation one department or is it two departments?
That's the question, it, it's one department, but it actually consists of two separate things.
Mr. Cody, I am not, definitely not prepared to tell you what the, what the cost savings would be. My department would not have the ability to legislate or be able to run the recreation portion of this, of that. When there was an interim, uh, vacuum, I did run the Parks Department for one summer, going back two or three years ago, I, I've lost track of time right now. However, you're not gonna save a lot of time for as far as people, because the people that are doing the Parks and their mechanic, we would still need, need them. Could we incorporate them into the town, into the DPW side? I'm open to any, any discussion, but we have, we could actually have mechanics working back and forth and having workers, because half, actually, half the Public Works Department came from Parks and Recreation. So they have the knowledge. I'm not looking at telling you that we're gonna save X amount of dollars, but I can tell you definitely, we could not manage the recreation portion of that. I know what that entails, and that's not something that Public Works does. Parks, we could talk about that.
What, what they did when Mr. Premiano left, the former POCs and Rec Director, they split the two, they had Kevin handling the POCs piece and, um,
Kathy Pendola.
Kathy Pendola from Human Services handled the recreation piece of it. So they did split it that way for about four months.
Wait a minute. We had a POCs and Recreation Director in between Guy LaFave and the lady that was just sitting there?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Jay Premiano.
I must be living under a rock, because I did not know.
He wasn't here very long. Actually, actually, he wrote a book called Swim That Rock, so you were close.
Okay, uh, does anybody have any questions for Kevin under the, uh, under the eight, ten, I believe it is, the Engineering Department?
Yep, I just have, um, Professional Services, we jumped from twenty-five thousand up to one-twenty.
If you noticed, if you noticed, Mrs. Bacon, that all the employees, there's no employee there, so, the on-call engineer, we're, we've actually taken that amount of money and put it into the Professional Services.
Okay, so that, so the regular employee was eighty thousand, nine hundred twenty-one, and now we're spending one-twenty.
Plus, all the burden, the FICR, life insurance, group insurance, all that was all eliminated to zero.
Okay. I did not total those, thank you.
It's actually a ten thousand, one hundred fifty-dollar re- reduction in this, in this division.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything on, uh, under the Engineering Department? If not, then we'll move to, uh, eight-twenty, which is the Inspection and Permits side. Kevin, you have anything to say on that one?
Uh, we are still, uh, without a building official. Uh, we have, he has been running, being paid for out of, this year, out of our Professional Services, I believe. Uh, we budgeted for his amount because, and I've asked the town manager to consider what we had budgeted last year to this year. We cannot seem to entice anybody to come here as a building official for what we pay. Our building official that we had prior to this, that left, went next door to West Warwick for nearly twenty thousand dollars more. So, and we look at, we look at the matrix on all the building officials throughout the town, we're in the bottom third. We really need to get into the second tier, which means we need to offer some more money in order to get somebody to come here.
Because all the regular employees are listed in bulk, what is your building official get paid as his salary? Because we don't have that as separate. And we lost our building official to West Warwick for twenty thousand dollars more.
We did. Uh, the, the building official is, uh, factored in at sixty-one thousand, four eighty-seven minus, you know, not counting the burden. So we're in the sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand range, and we really need to be up closer to that seventy thousand dollar range to get somebody here of substance to stay here.
And, and the problem is we're not, besides, uh, I was speaking to town manager, we haven't got people that are qualified, that there's a couple of different licenses they have to have.
Oh, yes.
And they're not qualified, uh, to, to take the job, we don't have anybody in-house that can, that can move up.
No.
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 We've got a couple of people that have come in, spoken to us, that are working towards the second, which is, they, a lot of people have the first, which is the residential certification. They need the commercial as well, and they're allegedly working towards that, we've got a couple that have come in. We have one gentleman who comes in like every couple of weeks to fill us in on where his progress is going on it. We've put this job out a couple of times, and short of increasing the salary by a substantial amount, I, I think Kevin's right that we're not gonna, we're not gonna fill it, uh, unless we poach somebody from somewhere else.
Certification on one and two, um, is, is that a, uh,
State mandate.
Charter requirement?
No, state mandate.
State mandate?
Yes.
How are we getting by now without that person?
Right now, uh,
I know the answer to that one.
He's coming in on a per diem basis, uh, coming in at night reviewing, reviewing plans, and he's, costing us about four hundred dollars a week for him to come in, depending on how many hours, to review a set of plans, but he's not there on a day-to-day basis. We have our building inspector, minimum housing inspector, who's there on a day-to-day to do the inspections that he is qualified to do, but he can't sign off on plans or anything required.
So, and I can appreciate this. So I'm not saying it's a bad thing. So not only did we lose him to West Warwick for twenty thousand dollars a year more, but he's still drawing a weekly paycheck from the Town of Coventry on a per diem basis for services that he's providing to us.
Not a weekly.
He's a ten ninety-nine.
Yeah, he's not a weekly.
He's not, he's not an employee, he's a ten ninety-nine, where then he comes in. And it varies, there are some weeks it's a hundred and fifty dollars,
Yeah.
some weeks it's three hundred and fifty, it, it varies on how much he needs to command.
I understand that, but are, are we holding anybody up by only having him on a limited basis?
Holding anybody up? Uh, yes, we are, because they have to wait until he would be able to come in.
Right, that's what I mean, applicants come in, they, they, they have to wait until he can review the plans or sign off on them, or...
The only other alternative is to have nobody. We have nobody else, this is the, our only option right now, and this has been going on for seven, eight months.
I know that, I know that. I had spoken with, uh, the, uh, former president of the Situate Town Council, Situate's got the same issue, and everybody's looking to borrow someone, someone else's, someone else's building inspector.
I have a list of possible poachers for me to go and look at, if we, if we could offer more money.
The last time, the last time I looked, there were four communities that are attempting to find a building official. It, uh, I haven't received any complaints from anybody looking to have anything signed off on, so I mean, it is getting done, we haven't had any issues with that. The, the downside is we do not have him on, on staff full-time. But as far as whatever needs to get done, it is getting done. It is not delaying any projects that I'm aware of, and again, I've had no complaints.
It's getting done eventually.
Yeah.
It's getting done eventually, and it's not delaying projects to the point where people are ready to come in and start complaining about it.
Correct.
But let's not fool ourselves and say it's not delaying people's projects.
This is, this is not our goal, we are looking to try to do it, and we, every month or so, we put out another ad, trying to get some, somebody else. But again, like I said, there are several communities in the same, same boat. The problem is, this is a very complex test from what I'm being told, and people are just not going for this. Uh, we've, we've had, uh, we've spoken to several different contractors. We're doing anything that we've, we tend to try to get, to entice someone in, short of doing what West Warwick did to us, which was crank their salary, they're even, from my understanding, even paying his pension contribution. It's a substantial increase for him to get him because they couldn't get anybody. So I mean, it's...
We don't have the money in our budget right now to be able to offer that.
So the problem exists. The problem exists.
Yeah, right, I mean, uh...
So is this a time to ask about, some, a couple of people have sent me emails about we need some kind of a zoning official?
No, it's nothing to do with zoning department.
This has nothing to do with zoning? Is that another position that we also need to fill?
We have a zoning, we have a zoning enforcement officer.
We do have a zoning...
In the planning department, yes.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
We do, uh, you, metal.
Who was that?
Brian, Brian Wagon.
He's the zoning?
Yes.
I thought he was a, a Assistant Planning Director, but he's also the zoning. Okay.
All right, do we have any, and other related duties? Do we have any other questions under the Engineering Department? Uh, I mean, I, I don't see any extra funds that could be shifted, especially out of your department, to, to increase the salary at this time. I know, you know, we're, it's not helping the cause, but, uh, Mr. Manager, in, in going through this budget, I know you have, uh, I mean, if we need to increase the salary, we should increase the salary, but where are we gonna get the money from? You know, that's...
Any money we move...
It's two percent step.
Yeah, I wish. Now that everybody's out of here for the most part, there isn't even an increase in here for the, all of the non-union or department heads, because I, I didn't, there's just no way to do it and add that money, and that's, approximately a two percent increase would be about a seventy, seventy-five thousand dollar increase plus FICR increases. I don't, across the board, I don't have it, I didn't put it in, I don't, I, we just don't have it.
Now, I, in, in, what will help, and I know we've been putting, you know, we've been saying this a lot, but, we do have a, I don't know if you mentioned it prior to the meeting, in a couple more years, we do have some bonds that are gonna be paid, and we'll have a little bit more money, it's not a save-all, but it is gonna be a little bit more money for us. It might make things a little bit easier, but it's certainly not gonna cure all our financial problems, that's for sure.
No, it isn't, and it's two years down the road, it's not helping us now.
Going back to Mr. Cody's comment earlier about equitable payment for the non-union people to the union people, that's not happening, and there's already a lot of wrong links going on, you've already had one department transfer over to a union, unionizing. So, you don't wanna...
Well, and I think that's, you'll find, is part of the problem why we just lost an employee to West Warwick for twenty thousand dollars, because historically, the non-union employees are not compensated on the same schedule of increases as the union employees. And I'm not saying our union employees get a lot by any means when it comes to increases, when they get them, but our non-union employees are getting even less. So it's very easy for another municipality to be able to entice them away, because, you know, in the grand scheme of things, maybe ten or twelve thousand dollars ain't a lot of money in most people's life, but when you add that up over a career of years, it becomes substantially more important.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
We need to find a way around, around that. We need to, to create some continuity across the board when it comes to our employees, whether they're represented by a union or whether they're not. And I'm not saying it's gotta be even up, percentage for percentage and dollar for dollar, but we've got to be able to find a way to create that equity across the board.
How many employees do we have that are not a department head, that are non-union, working for this town?
I wanna, I wanna say off the top of my head, it's probably about fifty-five in that ballpark with the...
It might be the high side of that, I think, but...
Yeah, like I said, I'm just throwing, I'm, I'm looking back on what the number, it's, it's ballpark in that, there's, could be fifty, fifty-five, but they're, actually, let me take that back, because there are less, because we lost Human Services, they went union. So it's probably down to in the range of forty-five...
You're right.
To fifty.
Out of how many employees?
Total number is two and change.
Yeah, it's just over, I think, with something off the top of my head, something like two, five to seven.
Yeah, I haven't got the exact number in my head.
That's in all departments.
That's in all departments, police.
Police, et cetera.
Correct, that's full-time, and then, and the permanent part-time.
Okay, are there any other question, yes?
Actually, can we just go back to the, um, with the employees? With the school department, we have a list, um, I have a list of all the employees, and it has their bargaining unit and, um, their salary, could we do the same for the town?
I will do the same thing for the town as well. Um, Cheryl was out the other day with the snow and everything like that, I was gonna get that full printout, and today with everything going on, I forgot to grab it, but I will get you the exact same thing.
And all the council members.
Absolutely.
Why, did you have to go shovel driveways to make extra money? What's the snow got to do with it? I was here.
If nobody else has any...
I actually, I do have a couple
Okay.
on the roads and bridges, we're still on that one?
No, we're not, we're still on it.
We're still on it. Inspections and permits, I believe.
Inspection and permit.
Okay, we're still on inspection and, uh, and bridges, so if there's any other questions on this department, it's, we're on eight-twenty. If there's no other questions, let's move forward to eight-thirty, which is roads and bridges. And Councilman Bacon, you have some questions on roads and bridges? Or you gotta, you wanna say something first?
I was gonna say Kevin May, I mean, he's probably gonna say something, so he'll probably answer them. Probably already knows what they are.
Let me, uh, let me just quickly, before we get into line, by line items, we talk about what we need and what the staffing breakdown for the Public Works Department is. In the Roads and Bridges Division, we have two foremen, twelve driver labors, six operators, two office staff, and one director. In the Facilities Maintenance Division, we have two facilities workers, two custodians, and one foreman slash safety officer. In Vehicle Maintenance, we have one foreman and four mechanics. Sanitation, we have one foreman driver, ten driver collectors, one operator transfer station, and one part-time recycling coordinator. So you can see we're the forty, well, actually, with, with the part-timers, we've got about fifty-two people in the, in the department. We need, in order to get the services, what we're doing, just so you understand, on the Roads and Bridges Division, those twenty employees, we have asphalt patching on a daily basis, catch basin cleaning and repairs, road grading, street sweeping, brush cutting, tool room, small engine, signs, mailboxes, pavement, and driver for one person. Sideway, sidewalk maintenance, asphalt paving, storm drainage, and sanitation. Those twenty employees, we can't cover all those things every week the way we want to, sometimes it's only three times per week, sometimes it's daily, sometimes it's daily for six months. The, the Facilities Maintenance Division, those people also, let me, let me just back up a little bit. Those same people in the, in the wintertime and throughout the year, let me give you a short list in the last two to four years of what our people have done for other departments, never mind just us. Police locker room construction, dog pound bathroom renovation, town hall personnel office construction, town hall finance director's office, town hall library interior painting, Human Services temporary offices at the Bioscience Building, construct the school bus yard, remove playground and prepare the foundation at the school physical plant relocation for Oak Haven. School, construct parking lot at Washington Oak, construct parking lot at Block Rock School, at, a parking lot at Ty Oak Avenue, west, a retaining wall at Western Coventry School. Help for playing field at Hopkins Hill School and construct a parking area at Middle School. Our department, never mind the list, what I just told you, this is what we do beyond, and we talk about cutting people. The services and what the, the assistance that we give other departments would not happen if we lose any, any people. We already have a list of projects that need to go on this year, and we, as soon as we get through this little bit of snow situation, we'll get started on it, but we're gonna be, we haven't asked for any new employees in the Roads and Bridges of Public Works in the five years that I've been here. So, we're trying to maintain the same amount of services with less money and trying to, to make you all happy with what we're doing, and it's a challenge, but we're doing it.
I think, I think that in the first presentation of this budget, Mr. Wazika said that he was committed to, um, having a budget that would be reasonable but would not lay off any people. So he put a, a stake in the ground, so to speak, a few weeks ago about doing that as much as possible, yeah.
I, I get very defensive when we start taking people away and want the same services.
I, 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 I got a question.
Sure.
Because I just sat here and listened to what you said, and I heard it very clearly. The school budget compared to the municipal budget, the school bu, the school department has a physical maintenance department. I know, they're housed right next door to my home. If DPW is doing all this work for the school department, why are we not asking and/or demanding some kind of reimbursement for DPW for the money that's being spent out of the municipal side of this budget to service properties that are, the school department is responsible for? Why is that coming out of his budget instead of the school department's budget?
But he's also doing work for Human Services and other...
All I can say, Mr. Cody, is that prior managers, uh, and again, I, I understand, the school department is a department within the town, and we are charged with helping all the departments. So, I, yes, believe me, I, I would love to see the school department pay for some of the heat over the annex building that they're taking up, you know, that piece of the building, or paying, we're still paying for, uh, staying for a good, a good portion of the Oak Haven school, we're still paying even though we're not using it, and they are. The school bus has been relocated to a building, a, a room back in the annex.
That you, that your department built, that your department built the parking lot for, for a profit company, a for-profit company that does business nationwide in this country, for profit, and your budget had to cover the cost of establishing a parking lot for them so we could provide them with free parking for their buses for a reduction in our contract, maybe? Because nobody showed me a contract that said they're reducing the cost because we give them free parking. Nobody.
I believe that part of the, uh, part of the deal with the buses, whether they do provide them a place to park and a place to store the buses, that's part of the, the contract when it goes out.
Because we moved them out of Wood Street, that's why...
That we were providing for them!
I agree with you. You're gonna have to ask the former manager, uh, why things happened on the way they did.
Look, I agree with you totally that if we're doing work for the school side... I agree with you totally that if we're doing work for the school side and, and...
We're sitting here, we're sitting here giving a haircut to every department head on the municipal side of this budget. We're cutting them and cutting them and cutting them, to the point where if you cut them anymore, the taxpayers are going to start to lose services. They're doing work for other departments that have a budget that can help defer the cost out of his budget or to his budget, and that's not happening.
The building maintenance, as far as the town buildings, and I'm not talking about the school department, but the town buildings, the maintenance budget and the, the, that's all part of, we don't segregate out and say, okay, there's X amount of dollars in the public works, I mean, so that's why it's coming out of there. Now, as far as the school department, the fact that Kevin's department was doing parking lots, I mean, this is the first time I'm hearing that, that we were involved in doing these.
Yeah, once again, I'm talking about recycled asphalt parking lots, and we still have to do the excavation. It's manpower and equipment that we're utilizing. So the equip, the materials have all been either through the bond, uh, like the fencing for the bus yard. We're not expending any money from our department as far as materials, but we are taking the time and equipment and the fuel that goes along with that to help with these other departments.
Equipment, manpower, fuel.
All the, all the burden that goes along with it.
Yeah, I, I absolutely think it's something that... I, I actually think that that's something that, you know, that we could look into, I mean, really, uh, I understand it's all taxpayer dollar when everything is said and done, I get that, but, uh, we shouldn't be stressing out the DPW budget, and, uh, that's something that we should in the future definitely look at, you know, what being compensated for out of a maintenance budget from the schools.
Again, Kevin, Kevin brought up an even, a, a, a point that goes on every day, and the fact that they're in approximately 25% of the building across the street, and they pay nothing towards any of that. That all, and the other side of that coin, though, is, if you think about it, we're putting it in one pocket and taking it out of the other.
Taxpayer dollar.
If we give them, I mean, so...
You'd have to give them more money for their...
We're going to pay it no matter what, if we're paying it either to them and then they pay it back to us, or we just pay it, there really isn't a savings on that, because we're still going to give it to them to, just to get it back.
Agreed. But when the total operating budget for the town of Coventry, including the school department, I'm going to throw a number out that may or may not be accurate, but 67% of that total budget goes to the school department. The rest of it, the town operates on the municipal side. All right, 70% goes to the school department, the municipal side operates on the additional, the leftover 30%, and I don't mean leftover like 30% is nothing. Everything he's talking about doing for them comes out of that 30% instead of coming out of the 70% that they were already granted by the taxpayers. There's an inequity there, so we're sitting cutting his budget, and he's providing services to other town departments that are cutting into his budget that he's not getting reimbursed for. Where in his budget does it say, where, this is the money for the work that you provide to the school department? This is the money for the work you dis, to provide to Human Services? This is the money for the, that you provide to Parks and Recreation? Where does it, it doesn't say that.
Please don't misunderstand, Mr. Cody, I'm not complaining that we're helping the departments. I just want you to understand that the manpower needs of the department in order to provide these services to the other departments is what, is where we're at, we haven't asked for any additional people in five, five years.
No, I understand that, Kevin, and, and I know you're not complaining, I am. I am. Because I think it's a legitimate complaint. We have the largest town square mileage-wise in the state of Rhode Island. You've got 67 miles of road.
450 lane miles, 250 miles of road, 450 lane miles of road.
That is being maintained by a department 52 people, and that's not all out on the road every day.
That's in all divisions, yes.
Right, that's in all positions, and you're the guy that's giving $100,000 back out of his budget so we can make a bond payment.
Oh, keep in mind, the police department gave backs also, so...
Doesn't make sense, from my business standpoint, it doesn't make sense to me.
Doesn't make sense, but we've got X number of dollars that we can work with, and we have to make it work, and when we get hit with things like a bond that's been passed, and we have to pay for, we've got to come up with that money from somewhere, and that money, unfortunately, again, we thought that was going to be in, in the old, in the 21, it turns out it hit into, into the 20, we've got to make those numbers work.
And maybe it should be coming from the school side. I don't know.
Well, I mean, you have to also look at all the contracts, we have a lot of, we have a lot of contractual obligations.
You had it right.
We have many contractual obligations, and if you look at line by line, we have to go two-thirds of the, down each page just about to get past the contractual obligations.
Agreed.
For salaries, FICA, pensions, so on and so forth, there's not anything left for programs.
I know that, I, I know that, but it's, but it's the elected officials in this town that have entered into and negotiated these contracts on this side as well as on the school side. It's the elected officials that have negotiated these contracts. We have to stop negotiating contracts that the taxpayers can't pay.
But you were also part of that too.
Agreed!
And I was part of it, we were all part of it at some point in the process.
But, and see what happens is, those contracts are approved by the elected, and then the employees on both sides, we're the ones that have to make those numbers try to work with what we've got. That pot is not big, 30/50 eliminates and kills a lot of additional revenue, and again, I hate that word.
Ed, yes and no. Can you imagine, in this climate, in the state of Ro, in the town of Coventry, going to the taxpayers and saying, "We want more than 4%"?
No, no.
I think 30/50 is a good idea.
No.
That's not...
No, no, what I'm saying is what 30/50, I'm not talking about the 4% cap. I'm talking about what it does in, this year, we had $800,000 in additional money that was raised by new properties that came online or improvements and, and increases.
They count towards 30/50.
And what happens is, that actually comes off the tax rate, because that levy has to maintain. So what happens now is, we've got to, we've got to make back 1.2% of that levy just to get us back to that money that we would have received. So in turn, it gives us even a smaller gap to be able to have to try and make up for all of these things. Again, I, I'm, we don't, I mean, you're looking at the school side, you're looking at our side, we've got these mandatory costs that are annihilating us, so we've got to cover those mandatory before we can do the rest of them, and that's what we're trying to do with these budgets.
Can, can I interject one little, one little comment here? As far as, um, the tax levy and the tax increase, the reason why, for Coventry, the, the tax rate i- is, it's just, I've watched, I've watched it, I, I've seen it trending. This upcoming year might be the time in which certain, um, decisions in the past when it came to limiting collections for certain groups of people might be, need to come up to reallocate down to a more equitable rate. That's just something that I, you know, I'm just looking at where it comes to the growth and that's just something as, as a, from a pragmatic side, as some, as financial side. You gotta, there's got to be a balance side, so...
I, I'm just, I'm just at a point, and, and, and maybe I shouldn't be saying this publicly for the first time, maybe I should have said it publicly a long time ago, maybe the last time I was on the council.
Maybe you've said it many times before.
If we're at a point in this town where we are presenting budgets that we have to work down to 4% every year, and we're going to present budgets to our taxpayers that call for 4% tax increases every year, maybe we're at a point where we should turn into, we should be like Central Falls, file bankruptcy, let the state come in and take it over, and, and emerge from bankruptcy and come out the other end and be healthy again.
Can't quite do that yet, that's farther down the road, you'd have to draw down all reserves, you'd have to do, you'd have, you have years before that. And as you know with the ratings, we are still at the A1. Yeah, they put a negative outlook on us, but there's still a lot of room to fall. There's a lot of other avenues besides just, you, you have to look at the other side of the equation, which is the, the revenue, the collection side, the sewer program, which is, absolutely needs to be fixed, but you fix things like this moving forward is where, where you need to go. Doing that, throwing out the B-word, that is so far away, and you're going to, before you can even get there, you have to cut those services, you have to go through a lot of pain before you'd even get there, so that point, it's still far from...
Listen, we're not far from cutting services right now, we're sitting here talking to a man who felt like he's got to sit at that table tonight and defend his employees because he's heard word through the grapevine that we're talking about layoffs and cutting, he's got to sit there and defend his employees.
I have no idea how he's going to do it next year, I, I, I don't, I do not envy him, if people say that they don't envy me, I don't envy him.
I don't know how anybody thinks, we're going to recommend a 4% budget, if that's what it comes down to, a 4% tax increase, and that's going to pass at an all-day referendum. If you believe that, I got a bridge to nowhere, I'll sell you cheap. Cheap, because it's not going to happen, and it's going to end up back in our lap, and we're going to have to do it again, and we're going to have to present a second budget that we got to pay for an all, no, that the taxpayers are going to pay for an all-day referendum for, and we're sitting here asking him for $100,000 to make a bond payment. Ridiculous.
Agreed, now, the only way that I would say that, the only way that you can get something to pass with any increase is essentially coming to the town and telling them that we have done exactly what we've done. We've driven it to the bottom, and that accounts for all departments, every department has to say that. And obviously, from what you've all seen here tonight, we've driven it to bare bones. There's nothing left to give, so, um, again, it's a two-sided street when it comes to it, there needs to be a, an expense and a revenue side.
Can I, excuse me, can I just dill the rest of my presentation?
Yeah, absolutely, we want to move right along.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have two questions on roads and bridges.
Yes.
We're still on that, I think.
We are now.
Okay, uh, temporary services, just these, um, the increase from 62,000 to 101, what was, what is that?
That $39,280 increase is contractual, that you folks just approved the pavement markings increase and catch basin cleaning. Those increases in the, in the budget are those items right there.
Okay, and, um, further down, asphalt products, it was 45,000, now it's $0?
Yes, because if you notice on line 830, 242, we've combined asphalt products and streets and sidewalks to 80,000. We took that same amount of money and just combined it to one light up. It was kind of, it was, the way it was set up was kind of foolish, that I had streets and sidewalks, and then I had asphalt, so we just put it all together, the streets and sidewalks, the asphalt, come out of it.
Oh, okay.
It's combined.
Okay, all right, um, that was it, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions on the, while we're in the, uh, the Roads and Bridges?
I've got, I've got one. Uh, as I saw, it was, I'm, I'm, we're keeping an eye on the social media thing, and I, I saw one of your explanations when someone complained about, uh, a plow, uh, you know, dropping, uh, snow in, uh, in, in, you know, in an area it shouldn't be, and going too, going too quickly. And, uh, you, the answer was, well, our GPS has him never going more than 20 miles per hour. Is, is that pretty much what we're using the GPS services? Tell me about the benefits other than refuting somebody's argument that we're going too fast to, to be spending $15,000 in GPS services.
No, we use the GPS services on a daily basis to find out where the vehicles are at. If we find that there's one vehicle that's sitting too long in a certain area, is there a medical issue with the driver, so I'll go out and respond to that area, or is there something else that they may need to have a discipline situation on? But no, I know, this way here, we know where they're at during the snowstorms, I can see where they're, they're located, and what their speeds are if there's a question on that. And, uh, it's funny that, uh, Mr. Wazika will also comment, you got, everyone got those email about that, that gentleman in Oak Haven. But what you didn't get was the email that came two days later that said, "Thank you very much, Mr. McGee, I appreciate all the work you've been doing to get this thing straightened out." He only sent it to me, he didn't send it to everybody else, he'll complain to everybody, but only complained, said thanks to me, so...
Well, that's why, I, I mean, again, it's something where, so we said, well gee, is, is that what we're using GPS services? Or just to refute somebody's argument, no.
It's one tool.
There's a plethora of reasons that we have that service.
It's one tool that we use.
It's also used to analyze as far as, is plow, plow routes as far as how many times the roads are getting hit? Are the ro, are the routes efficient, are we losing time? So no, there are other areas that that thing is used for as well as...
Throughout the year.
Because it'll show it, the history of where a particular vehicle is, you know, et cetera. Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
I did have one more question, could you just clarify, professional, you have it listed twice? And one is for 1,500 and one is for 7,000.
Yeah, one is professional development, okay, that's for when we go to conferences here, like New England Public, uh, uh, yeah, New England American Public Works Association, the, uh, Solid Waste Association in North America, we have the conferences within the area that we go to. There's a cost for, depending on how many employees that we might send, could be 300, $400, so when we do this, it's two or three items that happen through the year, that's what the, uh, $1,500 is for. The professional services is basically our tree cutter that we have on sta, on call for whether it's trees that are down, that are either down or trees that are precarious because of the weather. And God knows, we've been getting some pretty inclement weather that's required a lot of wind damage. We're also going to be working with the National Grid, uh, there's a lot of die-off on the areas with the white oaks, and they're going to be taking down a lot of trees, so they've asked us for some help also to work along with them, not doing it for them, but to having some of our people help them with some chipping, because they're going to take care of some of the, that damage in our right of way. But we've been having a lot of trees that, that have been going down, and that's what that's for.
Okay, anybody else?
No, but, um, you guys are going to have to excuse me, Mr. McGee, I get an early start tomorrow morning. I'm going to get five hours sleep as we speak, so I'm going to exit. And, uh...
And we, any questions, anything comes up, we'll get ahold of you and get any information to you.
All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions on, uh, you have any, that's, we'll move on to, uh, the snow removal budget, uh, 8:40, you have anything on that, Kevin?
Yeah, we've actually had to, because of this, the mandated reduction, we actually reduced our salt budget from 150 down to 125, we reduced $25,000 in order to make that. I can't predict what next year is going to be like, it looks like we are, even though these last three storms in, in this past week, we're going to be using just about all of our salt budget, because even though we don't have large storms, every time there's an ice call or this, we have these two or three inch storms, we go out and, and treat the roads to make them safe, so... I don't know how that's going to happen, so it goes back to the, it goes back to the transferring. Next year, I may have to transfer, but I don't know where I'm going to transfer from, so...
Well, I mean, we need salt, because that's a public safety issue, we don't have the mixture of the, the sand salt, correct?
I don't have $25,000 anywhere else to take it from. Yes, you're absolutely right, and I'm, we're going to do it, but I'm going to be over budget on that somewhere, the money's going to have to come from somewhere. But the budget, my budget doesn't, can't reflect that right now.
So if we have a tough winter next year, this is...
We're going to have salt, we're going, the roads will be safe, but we may be going to some other places looking for money, because it just can't come out of this budget.
What, uh, and what I did want to say is that, in all of this, everybody's looking for efficiencies, and, and, and it's a compliment, I don't know who the driver was, and I, I think I even left you a message, that I happen to be following a truck that, uh, looking for icy spots, and when it got a little bit icy, turned the sand on, when he got done with that boom, it was off. So he wasn't spreading it in areas that didn't require it.
Every day, we have two trucks that go out during, during the freezing weather to treat, we have areas throughout town that we know Hope Furnace Road was pro, for one, and throughout, throughout Carys District, and, uh, down by, uh, McCalla Boulevard and whatnot, so they're all over the place, but we have two trucks that go out, one east, one west, and they go out and treat for the first few hours in the morning, those icy spots that we have.
But it was something that, as I was following, I was thinking, this guy's doing a nice job. You know, he, he did only strictly where it needed to be done, and those are the types of efficiencies that only come with conscientious employees.
Thank you.
Okay, if, uh, if we don't have any questions, any further questions, uh, here again, we're going to have an opportunity to question again, with more public hearings, if we have anything. Uh, Building Maintenance, which is 8:50, you have some comments on that, Kevin?
8:50 is, uh, one of my more problematic departments as far as so many things that are going, going wrong because of the age of the buildings. Again, we talk about capital improvements, uh, we, we don't put it into the buildings, the school departments have identified their capital needs. We're not identifying, we've identified our capital needs, but we're not addressing them. So we have a lot of, a lot of buildings that need additional work, we got roofworks that, that I had to spend, you know, $5,000 this year on replacing a portion of the roof at DPW, and we said, well, that's, that's a fairly new roof, we went back and checked, it's 22 years old. So these roofs, you know, our infrastructure is aging, and the more and more it goes on, the more, more repairs. The police department, the police station, uh, needs to be... The police department, the police station, uh, needs to be brought under the encumbrance of the building maintenance division because as they take over their new building at Wood Street, the building on Main Street, we have to maintain it. So I got the numbers of what it costs the police department just for the basic maintenance. So that's an increase in this budget line item, so. So we're at, we've added that to it. Uh, we've reduced, we've reduced water service. We've reduced, uh, fixed plant. The annex building, we've, you know, we have additional costs because we have additional use being going on. And even though I know that's going up, we had to reduce that line item. So in all the, the building, building mechanical.
We understand that we need to put some repairs into it. It'll take a while to recoup the money. However, just leaving it sitting, doing nothing is the worst possible thing we could be doing with it. It's not being maintained like it needs to be.
Well, it is being maintained. The building is being maintained the way it's supposed to. The northeast corner, we're not doing anything but dry storage. But we have, a majority of the center portion is being utilized right now. We have the gym, Parks and Recreation is using the gym on a regular basis. The police department is using the weight room in their training facility over top of the, the gym area. Uh, we have, the police IT department is in the center area. We have the building department planning and we also have the school administration. So the building is at probably about 65% use right now. Is there, is there more capacity? Absolutely. But we just need to invest a little bit more money to get it to that point.
And that's our problem. All right, does anybody have any other questions on the building and, uh, maintenance? Okay, I guess the next apartment we'll move to is, uh, 860, which is the refuse collection. I'm sorry, did I say it wrong?
Yes, 860 is correct, refuse collection.
860, yes.
Page 31.
Again, contractual in maintenance for the most part, uh, you don't see any large increases in that department.
I, I, I have a comment on that. We, uh, back when we decided to bond out these refuse trucks and, and we went with the, uh, recycling the way we did, there was talk that it would eventually fund itself with the recycling and the payments we'd be getting from, uh, the, uh, public.
Resource recovery?
Yeah, it.
But has that happened or has it not happened? I mean, I know it was gonna take a few years and, uh, i- is it paying the bond off from the money we're getting or is it paying, that we bonded out for that?
I, I will let Mr. Arnett talk about bond payments. Uh, however, resource recovery in the last three years because of the recycling market in China, uh, has stopped giving any rebates back to the municipalities, uh, which we would get anywhere between 30 to 70,000 dollars a year. We have been reducing our trash collection slightly and that's strictly through the work of our recycling coordinator by educating the, the people in town to divert more and more to meet the state mandates of a 50% diversion and our recycling rate of 35%. Her educational, uh, work with this, with the schools, with all the town departments and with the, the public, doing things like, we have a, uh, Eco Depot has been canceled this year by, by, again, we had that for, every year. Now it's being canceled for Coventry and some communities for this year and will be on for next year. We have an Earth Day scheduled for the end of April that we're gonna be cleaning up the, the Greenway, which we talked about in some of the riverbanks. We work with Protective River Authority and some other communities, some Boy Scout troops to clean the upper and lower parts of the, the riverbanks. So we got a composting program that's done on a regular basis. She is working diligently to work with the residents and going out and doing waste assessments when somebody isn't doing, uh, isn't recycling correctly, uh, putting stuff in there that shouldn't be. So she goes out on a, on a regular basis to basically inspect people's recycling. And then when they don't, sending them out letters and letting them know what the problems are. The drivers do the same thing by stickering the containers, letting them know there's a problem. The recycling coordinator will then go out and check the following week to see if they corrected it. Then we'll send out letters and try to educate people. Uh, one of the things to make this, this all work, again, there's a couple of different facets to this that when we, this was presented. We need to update our solid waste ordinance. Uh, we've had a couple of redrafts and I'm gonna be coming back before the council within the next couple of months asking for some action. We have no teeth in our ordinance right now to make people comply. We basically get people to thumb their nose and do other things to us that they're not gonna comply and we have no way of stopping it. So we've reworked the ordinance, worked with the municipal court judge and with the police department, reviewed them both and trying to get this thing implemented so that we can help mandate that the recycling is, it is a state law, but now mandated on the town level. We also, excuse me, one of the other things was, was part of the presentation in order to make this thing work is that we indicated that we needed to, not gonna ever happen, I don't think, $275,000 a year had to be put aside in order for a replacement. Because all nine of those recycling trucks, trucking trash trucks were born at the same time for a replacement. Once they get to that, close to that 20-year range, we need to get into a replacement cycle. We were looking in, to make this thing work, we need to be, we told the council then that we need 275,000 dedicated each year to put into a fund specifically for that replacement. I don't think a dime has been put in yet. So, and I don't see that's gonna happen with the, the problems that we have. But to answer your question, is it paying for itself yet? No, until we get the recycling diversion rate up where it's supposed to be, the recycling rate where it's supposed to be and continued education, bringing on the part-time recycling coordinator was very important. And we need to expand her, her duties.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions as far as the refuge disposal? All right, seeing none, I will, uh, move on to, uh, vehicle maintenance, DPW, I believe it's 880. Do you have to say it like that?
880, which is, as Mr. McGee indicated, vehicle maintenance.
Actually, one 870 for us, though.
Did I miss?
We kind of scooted over disposal.
Oh, I, all right, uh.
There probably should be.
There's two pieces for refuge, collection and disposal.
Okay, I did skip over 870, which is refuge disposal, I'm sorry.
So basically, we've, we've had the calculation on the amount of tons that we actually, uh, take care of every year. It's 11,000, 10 tons at $47 a ton, which is disposal rate now. And that's where we come up with the 507,470.
And that is going up again?
No, they've held off and we, we're, we're arguing with all the municipalities and working with resource recovery, resource recovery to, uh, they're putting in a new contract and we're, we're fighting them to the nail that no increase for this coming year. And they've agreed finally, part of the negotiations that no, they're not gonna increase it this year, so.
So that increase is due to increased tipping fees?
Tipping fees aren't gonna increase until after 2022.
No, but the volume, the volume has increased down. Is that why the increase?
No, it actually is not an increase. It's actually.
Well, we've got $52,000 increase in the budget, Cap.
What you've got is, we've actually reduced, we had to steal, I should say steal, had to transfer money out of this line item in order to pay for some of the vehicle maintenance repairs that we had coming up this year. So it's not a true number. But every time that we have, the last two years now, we've, this year and last year, you start taking money away from some of these line items. There's no place else to transfer from. So this is one of the line items that we had to transfer from. So even though it's $52,000 more than up to 400 and change, it's not, 507,000 was the fiscal 19 budget. And we're still asking for the same, just a few dollars less, 5,000, 507,000 this year. We'd asked for 4, 517,000, but that's been reduced down. We've actually had an increase. Yeah, to where we were from the fiscal 19 budget. We've asked for, this year for $3,000 more in the licensed permits, which is a state mandated to reach, recertify our transfer station once every three years. You notice it goes back to fiscal year 17, the last time we had to, to pay that. So now it's in this year's. So that's not something we have any chance to move on, so.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, why don't we move to 880, vehicle maintenance. And I'm sure there's a lot to say about that.
As, as we go back and forth, uh, with the unfunding or non-funding the capital, our equipment is, even though they may, they may look okay because three years ago, when I first got here, the first thing I did, we went through and did bodywork and paint on all the vehicles. And still putting, you know, a new dress on a pig is still, still a pig, you know. So we get a lot of vehicles that are, that are 20 years, are 20 years old or in that 15 to 20-year range that are not becoming dependable. The amount of money we've spent just on the trucks this year to keep them up is, you know, I've had two turbochargers that were $7,500 each on twos. That's $15,000 out of a line item. That's only, well, 75,000 last year. We've asked for 80,000 this year. That's actually only that $5,000 increase. It's not gonna be enough. Uh, let me just, if you don't mind, just one second. As of Monday, truck repairs, we budgeted 75,000. We transferred 13,600 to cover bills and that was 88,000. Right now, we're at 94%, 94.25%. I've only got $5,000 left in that line item for truck repairs from now to the end of the year. Still not gonna be enough. So I transferred 88,000. I'm not gonna have enough 88,000 and yet my budget here is going from 75 to 80. I know I'm $10,000 under just using today's numbers. Never mind what, what happens for the next three months. My hands are tied, so. It's the same thing with, same thing with the, uh, equipment repairs. We're level budget on that. The only thing that we've increased and asked for increase is the sanitation repairs. Those are the only vehicles that travel five days a week, 52 weeks out of the year in some of the most inclement weather, especially at resource recovery. The amount of repetitions on a 600 stops per truck per day is, with the wear parts are unbelievable. So, and then a lot of these new trucks are all electronics and there's electronics issues. So outside of warranties, they're not, they're not warranty items. We've got the extended warranties on the trucks. It's not the Mack trucks. It's a lot of the stuff that goes along with that. The new diesel emission fluids, the deaf mechanics that go through with that is, is, we're already at that point.
We need to make these trucks last as long as we can.
And we have to maintain them to do that. And we have to, to maintain the trucks in order to provide the service to everybody to collect their trash on a regular basis. Now, currently at sanitation, sanitation was budgeted at 40,000 last year because Mr. Waters thought that there were newer trucks, so he didn't have to budget for it. We had to transfer $30,000, 30, 30,375 to make the line $70,000 to pay for the repairs. Just on an ongoing basis, that $30,000 came out of the refuse disposal line items. I wonder why that's down, but I had to keep the truck, the sanitation trucks moving. We are at 89% of that budget line item and I only have $7,400 left as of Monday to, to maintain the sanitation trucks to the end of the year. Another transfer is gonna have to come from someplace. So when we talk about having control, I can't tell you that, without a shadow of a doubt, that none of these line items will ever not be moved. I don't know what that's gonna be unless you start, unless the council decides to invest in newer equipment. And even that, because they're wear parts and they're on the road, the way things are built today, they're not, you know, the construction with the steel that was used, you know, 20 years ago, the composites that everybody's using right now, so.
Is it, uh, is it time for the town of Coventry to be out of the trash business?
I'll leave that for the people that make those decisions.
We, uh, I mean, our, that bond to co, to buy these trucks and start this process was approximately $5.5 million that we've still got 14, uh, 16 more years on, I believe it is. 15 more years, I'm forgetting the exact number. There's a long time left on this bond to pay, to, to pay off these trucks and to pay off the systems.
These trucks will never last.
They're not gonna make it. They're not, they're, realistically, they're not gonna make any win.
Let me just correct, the, the trucks, I have confidence that the Mack trucks will make it. The wear parts, the, the wear parts on the bodies and the mechanics, the arms are, we've already replaced some arms and, and fittings and whatnot, so. I'm not as confident with the bodies, which are not the same cost as the trucks were. Obviously, the, the Mack trucks are Mack trucks and they're, they're gonna last us to 20 years.
Yeah, but it's the rest of the components on.
I guess, I guess my, my concern, when I talk about transferring, what my concern is that our goal should try to be to have a realistic budget based on realistic needs so that transferring does not have to take place. And that means that we need to do a better job at budgeting somehow and I'm not a budgeting expert and I have to leave it to the experts.
So I just wanna make this clear that.
It's not about budgeting, it's about funding.
Yeah, so, so there was some, so there was some shifting as well when it came to allocating to where there were line items that were arbitrarily cut. And then after that, when the, the, the bond got put into this year, we did, he's gonna make cuts again. And so I already know that he's gonna have to make transfers to make things happen. It's, hopefully, it's, I say hopefully, that it's gonna be a lot less than what it was last year because we've tried to put them and reallocate according to that. But he's still, he's at bear, that, that is what it is. So if there's a line item that, you know, we'll, we'll just take, for example, building maintenance. We all know that the building stock here is, is all, and that, that cost should go up. But miraculously, let's say that we don't spring leaks, right? And it's not as bad. I can understand then, you need to pull this because guess what? A tire fell off of a car because it's 30 years old. It makes sense. So it's not saying that it's not going to happen. I'm hoping to lessen it this year. But again, the numbers that he's having to cut, I would not, I'm not gonna be surprised again that, that, that most of the transfers are gonna be coming from 800s. I'm, I'm pragmatic.
Kevin's budgets are over 5, $5 million combined. There's a lot of, there's a lot of line items and yeah, but he's got a lot of expenses and a lot of things he's responsible for. And I would love to give Kevin another $300,000 to help ease some of this. We don't have it. We don't have the funding in, in the budget as it is. Mr. Cody said it right. We're looking at a four-point, more than likely, a four-point increase in, in the tax in the, in the levy. Because the tax rate increase is probably gonna be less than 3% because of that shift on what we've got. So the increase itself is not gonna be four, four points. The levy increase will be four points. But I mean, that's it. That's what we've got. We cannot go over that. We're not gonna get approval. We don't meet the criteria at this point to go over that four. So we've got what we've got. So to try and, we've gotta make it work. We've got a million five in mandatory increases that we're facing in this budget on our side alone. We don't.
We'll make it work.
We're gonna make it work, but I mean, we don't have an option. We have to make it work and that's what we're doing. And yes, I don't like cutting budgets. I don't like the fact that we sat and we were, we were nickel and diming on every, every line item we had to come up with these numbers.
You'll see a $9.93 cut.
Almost.
Like, you, we, we hit, and we treated every single department essentially the exact same. We said, loan fund or cut. And, and, and that's really what it was. And sometimes there was, if you could substantiate that I have a, a, a bill that I have to contractually pay, you support that, then would that make sense? And so that's what we did. And again, this is, this is bare bones, so.
If I may just comment on one thing that Mr. LaBrosse and I brought up earlier with Parks, uh, I think it was Parks and Recreation. Certification for the mechanics, they are diesel, diesel equipment. They do work on some of the smaller vehicles that the town has only because they're so old, they're not, they don't need to have the special diagnostics. So our diagnostics that we have, the two, you know, laptops for the, our trucks, the, the new, the newer freight liners and the Max, we can take care of. But there are some, and some of the, you know, my vehicle, which is a 2016 Explorer, they can't work on because we don't have the diagnostic equipment to go through it. So that has to go back to the dealer. But some of the older stuff that's, you know, 15 to 20 years, yeah, they can, they can still, they can do that. So there are a lot of things that we can and we can't do.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on, uh, any other questions on the vehicle maintenance? All right, but that being said, I, I think that's pretty much it for DPW and, uh.
I'm not even gonna let you get there. As soon as you start to be with the meat, I'm gonna end it with a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn is in order. Is there any other questions?
You don't wanna do 950?
You don't wanna do the general accounts, 950?
Yeah, 950.
950 is the general accounts for the general fund.
My apologies.
Okay, 'cause I'm not aware of what we did and what we did, so.
We're into the general fund, right. My, my apologies.
Do we want to just go skip through this so we cover every single one? So 960 has its contributions at zeros across the board?
If you, if you look at this, the bottom line on this one, there is an increase of $495,000 in this over last year's budget. But when you look down, you'll see where, where the vast majority of this money is coming from.
Excuse me, are you on 9, 950?
950.
Okay, I'm there, okay.
There is a, yeah, general fund. General fund. If you look at the big ones, we've got a $200,000 increase is the. is the Coventry West Warwick Sewer Fund money. We're looking at moving that into here for, so that's.
So, that is, it's highlighted as C O V W W, I believe it is here. That can easily be changed to a descriptor. We just threw that in there as a, as a holding place because it's something that would be easily, again, it can be changed at this point without a problem. So if you have a better suggestion for me, that would be open for any and all descriptions too.
And that represents what, that coding?
The Coventry West Forward Municipal, intermunicipal agreement when it comes to that, that service that they provide to us. And that's just a portion of the total amount of service. That's what you're discussing, correct?
Yes, it is. In fact, we had a meeting with them today again and this is something that, that definitely needs to be done in, to work towards stabilizing that fund along with some other things that you will see.
He actually wanted us to do the whole six hundred thousand, but we can only do two at a time.
We haven't got, we haven't got the money to be able to.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of recommendations. This is one of those recommendations.
Okay, and you have anything else to say on the general fund?
On the general fund itself, when it came to a lot of these, these line items as far as you'll see increases and decreases and things of that nature, what I did was I actually, I actually went through each one of these line by line, did the growth rates, change of rates over the past ten years especially, and I was looking at the growth rates and where they were trending and, or put them closer in line. If the dollar amount is a lower amount, what I would use would be a geometric mean as well, if you were curious about that. So that way it would catch some variances along the way. So, this is as close as I could get to a budgeting line items that may have some changes in them.
You'll also notice there's a hundred and seventy-one thousand in there for the SRP pension increase.
Yep.
Yes, yes. That's another subject, but yes. Okay, I see Councilwoman Bacon has itching to say a couple of questions. What do you have?
I just have the top couple of lines, the FICA, it says.
Retirement coverage or FICA med?
Both of them, just.
Okay, so we'll do the easier one, real quick. The easier one is retirement coverage. The retirement coverage is there in the event that an employee leaves and that we have to pay out sick leave. It could also include other types of things that may, if someone is removed. It is just retirement pieces that you have to plan for, for an individual that leaves employment here. As well as, so the FICA and med, that part is included, it's part of that piece, I believe. Am I correct on that statement?
Yes.
Okay, and then just further down, professional. Can you tell me what that is?
So, professional services, that is, that's the auditor as well, I believe, or. Oh, we have a bunch of professional services that go through. We have auditing services above, but professional services is, give me a second. I wrote it down. It's based year over year. So we have shredding, records retentions, things of that nature where they're general expenses that hit the town that may not be budgeted before. When I looked at this year over year and I trended out what we're actually spending, that's how that number was derived. I've not gone in line by line as well and pulled out exactly what each, each detail is. It's all, it's time consuming.
Are these contractual?
Most of them.
Most of them would be contractual, so I, I just, I, it's been a very long day. So I'm highly, I'm highly confident that part of the professional services includes our auditor. Auditing services is a little bit different, is not. You sure?
I will, I will do this. I will, I will burn that, the, the last two years on that, on all the expenses and I will send it out to all of you if you'd like, so you can see exactly what does come out of that line item. Off the top of my head.
You'll have a breakdown of all of that?
Yeah, I'll give you a breakdown based on.
It's very easy to pull, pull out. It's very similar to what I provided you originally with the contingency. You can see line by line what they are. It, however, I will, I'll just point out that pulling out the details for each one of those expenditures rather than that, it is, it is very time consuming. So for example, with the contingency fund, I just, I just, out of curiosity, I timed to see how long it would take for something of that magnitude, took about an hour time, which translates into just under a hundred dollars in time spent for it. So if we're going to pull out a lot of pieces and details, it's going to be quite time consuming. So just keep that in mind.
John, what I usually do on those, and we'll sit and talk, I'll actually take a run-through, find the vendor number and then just run the detail on the vendor numbers.
Okay.
And I can get, because the vendors are going to be typically just in there. So it'll just, I can burn it out and I'll show you how, how we do it.
Okay.
John's still learning the, all the ins and outs of this finance package, which is integrated at that.
Because I mean, one thing is, you know, we have a sixty thousand dollar increase with contractual obligations this year. You know, but we don't have like an actual list of all the contracts that we have, say with, whether it be a general contractor, whether it be sewer sanitation.
There are.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
We don't know where.
I do. And there are a ton of different contracts that we have that we run throughout the year and.
There are many, many platforms available that will, you could easily include contracts into and which makes tracking that very, very easy. But, and I would love to, I would love to update our financial system to, to do that. It would increase, it would help with this budgeting process so much. It would, it would very, it would significantly help. However, we're just trying to make ends meet right now, so.
And, and I understand that, but I just think, you know, it would help to understand also and even for the council because we do have some that come before council that we vote on and others we're not even aware of. So I really just think it would be a great idea if we could actually see all the contracts that we have, how long they are for, when they expire and their actual cost because possibly some can be renegotiated.
I will turn to the IT director and say, I would love, that would be really great information too, if you can get that.
And I do have one more quick question.
That was a good pass the buck.
Yeah.
You're fired.
Put it in the same database you're going to put the policies.
No, that's a really nice program. That is going to be, that's going to make a big improvement for us.
It'll actually save money in the long run.
What we're doing on that, that.
I think it's a dynamite.
It's a really, and again, everybody's going to be, they're going to, they're going to log in. They don't have to log in from here because it is cloud-based. So they can review it. We can put tests on to see if they actually read the policy. So we know that they've done what they, so it's going to be a really nice addition at a reasonable cost to improve. And we'll be able to document that. We actually train people on some of these things, so.
And you'll also be able to determine what you need to update, change.
It will, it will advise us on, on an aging on all of them. It's a cool setup. But yeah, I will get you this and I'll get it out to everybody if you'd like.
I just have a quick, quick question before I forget. Do we already have on the town website, do we have our town budget? Do we have our, the school budget also on the town website?
I was waiting till after tonight that we've gone through it and then we're going to put that in the school budget on. And then I'm going to hold off on the employees until we complete our side.
Okay, good.
So I can post both of them at the same time.
I was going to say this way.
So it doesn't look like we're throwing one versus the other out there.
No, I just want to make sure we have both, you know, so.
Exactly, I want it to be.
I would also want to point out one thing with the town insurance too. I grabbed out to calculate this, even though it is a small, it is a decrease. This is forty-three two hundred midway down, just a pass midway down. Because we were talking about insurance costs and things of that nature and what we're doing to mitigate those costs. If we can lower workman's comp claims and things of that nature, that one million zero fifty-five. That is, it's a large line item in there. So mitigating that is, is also a priority of mine. So what I've done essentially, we have a risk piece too. So we're trying to turn that dial down when it comes to comp claims and things of that nature and hopefully pull that back even further. So, just to let you know that there's, there's that line on, it is lower than it was. I'm still hoping it'll go lower in the future.
Okay, and of course, any of the department heads, because not many of them left, I hate to answer questions anytime throughout looking into this and if any questions, you can go through the town manager or through the department heads to answer any other further questions. What other sections have we?
The only other thing that we've got is, is the debt service and that's simply on the town side on the debt service. Because that, the other piece is, we fund it and it's for the school. We're looking at two point nine million dollars on the debt service for just the town piece alone. The school is another million five, I believe it is. So I mean, we've got.
It's just something we've got to get back.
Well, and again, when we talk about the seventy thirty split, that doesn't include, the thirty, the thirty includes the debt service for the whole town. So the actual piece of the budget, that's town budget, is more in line with like twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of the budget. Overall budget. It's, because this comes in as well. But yeah, we've pretty much gone over the whole.
If we have any questions, I, I want to thank you, John, and you know, you guys put a lot of time. Today's been a long day for everybody. I appreciate it and if we have any questions, we certainly will get ahold of you. If nobody else has any questions, are you all set there? Then a motion to adjourn. Okay, your motion stands. We have a second.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much.